Good evening and welcome to the May ninth Town Council meeting. If you'll kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And back on April sixteenth, we lost a colleague and a good friend. Lon Woods passed away. And if you don't mind, I'd like to have a moment of silence for him right now. Thank you. An announcement, the upcoming council meetings are Thursday, May twenty-third, Thursday, June thirteenth, our regular meetings here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And on Wednesday, June nineteenth, from nine AM until four PM, the council will be holding their retreat and goal session at Buckley's Great Stakes Carriage House, I believe it's called.
That is correct.
That's correct.
The nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Of June, yes. And that's four thirty-eight DW Highway, if you didn't know. It's open to the public, so.
Paul? Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Police Department is proud to be hosting the United States Police K-9 Association Region Four Patrol Dog One Trials on May seventeenth to May nineteenth at Ann Heiser Bush. This event is a chance for the area K-9 teams to earn National Patrol certification as well as compete amongst one another. These competitors, along with their K-9 partners, work tirelessly throughout the year so they can not only compete at a high level, but also serve the communities when called upon to do so. The event is run with the help of donations from the public and is open to the public. So, once again, it's May seventeenth through nineteenth at Ann Heiser Bush. The Merrimack Community Gardens at Wasserman Park are now open for the season, and there are just six plots left. If you'd like to obtain a garden plot this year, plots are twenty dollars for a ten by ten plot for Merrimack residents and twenty-five dollars for non-residents. For questions or concerns, contact Merrimack Parks and Recreation at six oh three eight eight two one zero four six. Spaces in the Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Programs are filling up fast. Camp Natticook for grades K through five are now ninety-two percent full, and Camp Trek for grades five through nine is eighty-seven percent full. Sign up today before we sell out. For more details, visit Parks and Recreation website at MerrimackParks, with an S, and rec dot org. Once again, that's W W W dot MerrimackParksAndRec dot org, or call six oh three eight eight two one zero four six. Finally, summer concerts at Abbey Griffin Park will be starting up for the season on Wednesday, June nineteenth, at six PM. Concerts are held every Wednesday night and will run through August twenty-first. Each week of the series offers a wide variety of musical styles, so we invite you to join us this summer for Free Fun Night for the entire family.
Thank you, Paul. Barbara?
Okay, so, just a short announcement. Most of the board already knows, but I will be resigning my seat effective May thirty-first. My last meeting will be on the twenty-third. My husband and I are moving to Florida, and so I do wish the council and the town of Merrimack continued success for the years to come. And I will be back, because we will be visiting every so often, so.
Great. That's unfortunate news, which I learned a little bit ago, of course, but we appreciate all of your contributions. And I envy us only in the wintertime when you're down there. Otherwise, I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
And I search for a way to not accept your resignation.
I know you have been working on that.
We also wish you the best.
Thank you.
And it'll be good to see you back every month for the planning board meetings.
Bob is already kind of going through separation anxiety.
Paul, did you want to speak to the? Did you?
I haven't read it as long, if the council has anything else. Okay, so, we learnt the news earlier this week, and we want to wish both Barbara and Bob happiness and health down in Florida. But saying so, we have a charter that we have to fulfill. And the charter states that the Town Council has twenty-one days to fill the vacancy, once we know when the date is. So, by May thirty-first, the twenty-first day would be the twenty-first day of June to fill the vacancy. By doing it early enough, and today is the ninth, if we go out and put a press release out till June seventh for anybody wishing to send in a resume and a cover letter, that'll give us enough, that gives us almost that thirty-day window that we do for most committees, of twenty-eight days. The ninth of June is a Sunday. So, you know, the office isn't open, but I figured because of everything, if we do it on that Friday by four-thirty, this way gives the time for the council to hold the meeting to discuss on June eleventh, or Wednesday, June twelfth, interviews. And then on the June thirteenth meeting, which would be the first meeting in June, the Town Council could appoint somebody to fill Barbara's seat. That gives us roughly eight days if something happens in that timeframe, so that you would have to hold a special meeting by the twenty-first of June. But it gives you that eight-day buffer in case something comes up or something major happens. So, we're ready to release, send out the press release tomorrow. That we've done, we've done this a couple of times in the past. Once was for Lon, not Lon, when Lon filled the seat. So, I think that was for Andy. We did it once, Andy filled it, Barbara filled it. And we had, we've done this before, and this is how, we're just following the same footprint that the council has set in the past for this, to come in and send it in. So, anybody who's interested in the vacant Town Council seat can send a resume and a letter, which includes your qualifications, personal characteristics, length of residency, previous positions held, and experience related to this position. There is one caveat, though. Qualifications include you must be a registered voter, and you must have at least lived in Merrimack for one year. Those are the only two qualifications to run for council. So, you have to be a registered voter, and you have to have lived in Merrimack for one year. But we're asking people to send in a resume and a cover letter, a letter of interest, basically, to explain their qualifications, personal characteristics, length of residency, previous positions held, and experience related to the position. And if you want to send that to Town Hall, attention Town Council vacancies at six Baboosook Lake Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire, or walk into the Town Manager's office and hand-deliver it, you can do that as well. Just has to be done by four-thirty on June seventh.
June seventh.
June seventh.
And just a quick question. Anybody that's on the council would have to give up any other, or a couple of different town positions, like Planning Board or zoning board or something like that, if it were to be one of those people that... They can't be on the zoning board.
You can't be on the zoning board.
Probably can be on a couple of other boards, too.
Right, you can be on the Planning Board only as an ex-official member.
As an ex-official member.
You would have to be appointed as the ex-official member.
You'd have to get rid of your, you'd have to resign from your Planning Board position. You could get back on, but...
Yeah, yes, you cannot hold another...
Except Barbara's going to still do that, right?
Yeah. I heard they're doing a video link every week.
From Florida.
Tom's paying for the special connection. So, but no, you're right. You can't hold another board.
Just to let people know.
Yeah, you can't hold another board that's related to the town of Merrimack. You can hold another board outside, like the school board or MVD. You just can't hold a board in the town of Merrimack.
Okay.
May I just say?
Yes.
As it was mentioned, I was appointed and filled Jackie Flood's seat five years ago now. And it's a really good way to become a member of the council and see if you like it, because your term is only good until next April. So, you would have to run anyway. So, it gives you an opportunity to kind of put your feet in the water and see if it's something that you like and you want to be doing for a while, so.
Is everybody okay with the dates that I laid out?
Eleventh and twelfth?
The eleventh and twelfth would be the interviews. And then the seventh is the deadline for bringing in your application.
And Barbara, thank you so much for your work on the Town Council and your support for all of us and the town over these past years. And we will definitely miss your attention with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. You all set?
Yeah.
Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council, you can do so at the table here or over at the microphone. Whichever you're comfortable with. And it should be on.
It is on. All you have to do is start talking now. All right, thanks. Scott Abins and Pete Dumas Lane. So, I wanted to come today to talk about the ATV park.
Is it on?
Is it on? Yeah, it's on.
We're not hearing.
I can hear it.
Try again.
All right, so, I came today to talk about the ATV park over off of Lawrence Road. About two years ago, I started correspondence with Paul to try to remedy some of the situations that we have there, where we've got illegal dumping, we've got park riders that are riding on the Classics Road that go behind the residences in the neighborhood, and it's noisy and a nuisance. Looking for the ability to actually keep the ATVs and the bikers in the park and keep people that are dumping as well out of that area. There's tons of old tires and couches and trash and things like that that are back there that have still not been addressed. So, just looking for some help on that.
Paul and I have chatted about this. I don't know if you had brought to our attention as well that they were four-wheeling on the cap landfill.
Yes.
And so, I don't know if...
We've talked to the police, and they're aware of the situation. Kyle was the, Kyle Fox was the DPW director when we brought it up. I thought all the trash was removed. Dawn's in the audience, she knows nothing about it, but I'm sure that she'll get somebody out there in the next week or so to clean up whatever's out there on the trash aspect of it. It's very confusing, this Classics Road, the way it sits, because it, there's a house that's up there as well that runs in and then all turns onto his property, and that's his driveway to go up there off of West Road. We have talked about what we can and cannot do. It was about a year and a half ago, so, don't quote me on this, but we talked about putting some kind of gate-ish situation there. However, I don't know, I can't remember why the conversation, why we didn't do it, to be quite honest with you at this time. We can revisit that for sure with the Police Department, Fire Department, and DPW up there. As far as the people writing off, we have been in contact with the Rough Riders, not the Rough Riders, the Wright Riders. Their group is getting smaller and smaller. However, they have put the word out there, too, that you need to stay on the track and don't go off it. Can't say that the people that are riding down that Classics Road and riding into the landfill, we don't know how they're getting in on the landfill. They got to be coming through some wetlands or coming in off of a back way through private property to get on that landfill. So, we're looking into that as well. And then the last thing is, is that, yeah, we're figuring they got to be locals that are doing it. The problem is, is they call the police, and by the police, behind the police to get out there, they're skedaddled. They're gone. So, we've tried these other avenues. Without fencing in the park to keep them in the park, I don't know, you know. Because they'll make their own trails. If we put up a fence or we put up a gate, Matt, you can help me out here, Deputy, they'll just go around it. They'll find another way to go around it. They'll find another spot to enter in and get back on it and make their own trail in there. So, I think that's one of the reasons why we didn't think putting a gate off of West Road would work, is because of, they'll just find a different way in, in behind it. We looked at gating off the areas by the track, same thing. They'll just make a different entrance into it.
I actually took the time to go out and look at the situation. I think, is it Joe's houses on the left as I was talking? And that's part of that Classics Road?
Yeah, right up there. I think it's, what, for West Road or, not for, it's right there, at the very end. It ends West Road, and then it goes into dirt, and then there's the driveway going up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I saw things put in the way to stop people from going in. I don't know if that worked. I suspect that it was a landowner surrounding it. The Classics Road is a unique thing. Without giving it up, it is available for people to utilize like that, I believe. And I'm just not sure, but if they're, you know, they're going up on your property, that's a problem. Going on the cap landfill, I don't know if we've had the opportunity. We were going to scour that around there.
We looked, and the foreman up there said that he could not see any openings
Any breach.
in the fence. So, they're not getting through the fence. They got to be coming in some other way.
Yeah, and those pictures were difficult to see, but they looked like young folks on the four-wheelers.
There's an opening, like, right on that north side of the property that goes into that landfill. I think it's the north side, right? It's north or west. So, definitely, they're going right in, right there. You can see where the tracks are. As far as I understand, that Classics Road usage is restricted to the same as you would any car. You need to be registered with a plate. And you can't ride to, and you can't ride back and forth. You can ride to the park on it, if you're plated, but you cannot recreationally ride on it, just like you can ride on a paved road.
Okay. All right, I'm not familiar with that, but I appreciate that.
We'll look into it further. I'll bring Fire, DPW, and Police back and see what we can do. I know Dawn's going to be on getting rid of the trash out there and getting, bringing it out to the dump on some of this stuff. And we'll talk about ways that we can try to alleviate this. I know down at other areas, when we had issues like Scolar Park, the rocks didn't really work, because they just moved them out. They went around them and moved them.
I guess in my mind, if there's not a legal reason why we can't block that off, I don't particularly subscribe to the, they'll just bypass whatever we're going to try to do, so let's not try to do anything. We should try to do something, right?
We'll try. We can try.
I think we should. I guess the other question is, if you block it off, does that stop the trash problem? I mean, who's, are people going to be making? There's two different problems here, right? One is people riding on it when they're not supposed to be, and trash accumulating there. And trash should be a lot harder to drop there if you block it off. I mean, they're not going to go find their own trail in, presumably. They might, but make it more difficult.
They have to work at it.
Yeah. Sorry.
We'll do whatever the council wants us to do, and we'll look into it and come back with a solution for the council. It's...
You had gotten some from the lawyers, did you not, Paul?
Yeah, I did a long time ago. I wish I would have known Scott was coming. I would have brought back my folder on this, to be quite honest with you. I can get all that stuff, but I did. And we did get something from the lawyers on the Classics stuff. The question is, does the town really need that Classics Road anymore? That's really the big question here. Because it was supposed to be connecting West Road to Lawrence Road, and that road cannot be connected because of the John Simeon Park.
That might be part of the action we can take.
Yeah, the action that you can take is releasing that Classics Road out there. But I'd have to see who's the property owners of that abut it. No, we abut part of it. So, we'd get part of the Classics Road, and then all the homeowners would get it also.
All right.
But I'll bring it back sometime. Give me a little bit of time, sometime in June.
All right, thanks, Paul. Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Basically, you're saying you'll agenda this for a future meeting, and we'll talk about it.
Yes, exactly.
Which is all we can do on a public comment.
Right.
We can't solve it here.
Hi, Lynn.
I hope you're all aware, but if you're not. Nick, can you have Grace come out here?
Yeah, we talked to her last.
Come on, Grace. This is a lady that goes like this in the window when you don't have your mic on. I just, no, just right there is fine. I just want to let everybody in town know that Grace was recognized by the Rotary Club for excellence in the workplace, for all the work that she does here. Phenomenal editing and just everything that she's done. So, I just want to acknowledge that.
She is the new voice of Merrimack. Thanks, Grace, and congratulations. Thanks, Lynn. If anybody else would further like to address the council? Seeing none. No recognitions, resignations, retirements under appointments. Per the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section six, six, at least annually, there should be a review with the Parks and Recreation Committee. This agenda items to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. And Tracy, how are you?
Isn't it much better than the last time I was supposed to? So, thank you for your patience.
No, no problem at all.
Tracy, just make sure that one's on, please.
Yeah. All right, you come here. So, a quick shout-out to Becky for getting everything all organized and me twisted around to this particular meeting. So, I do appreciate that. The last time, I couldn't breathe and speak at the same time, so, wasn't a good thing.
Well, I'm glad you didn't come.
So, thank you very much, council members. I appreciate you allowing us to come in and to talk about the multitude of projects that we've got going on with Parks and Recreation. I have been instructed tonight, though, to keep it brief, because it's going to be a long night, so, and that was by two different people. I can take a hint. You guys have a very lengthy report that came from me in January, and much to Becky's dismay, I think it was an eight-point font. So, there was a lot of information that everyone had to read. But just going through a lot of it, Paul did cover a couple of things that we are taking care of. One of the things he was talking about was the summer concerts. We are thinking this year not doing the movies in the park. One of the things that we used to do is for, depending upon the weather, four or three or four movies in the park, which would be over Wasserman. We're not getting the same level of participation, and so, we might increase the number of the musical events coming in instead and see how that goes, because we seem to get a lot of participation with the concerts in the park. Wasserman Lake Waterfront, we're working on, we finished up the one side. The next thing we're going to be working on is the ADA side. That's going to take place over the next couple of years. I know that there are permit issues, but we're dealing with them so that hopefully we'll be able to get it, so that everyone can come and enjoy the most beautiful waterfront that we've seen over there in a while. Let's see, the Natticook After School Program. So, there is the after-school program. It's been in place now, I believe, since September. Kids are being picked up from Thornton's Ferry School, brought over to Natticook. I believe we have started, Matt confirmed this, I believe we also started picking them up from Master Cola. We're getting interest, but we can't bring in Reed's Ferry yet. Don't give up. If you're listening, don't give up. We've gotten a great response from that, and it's been working out really well. Dog Park is going very well. We've got some wonderful volunteers. If anybody still wants to volunteer to help us out, we do need some help with maintenance. This is all volunteer work. This is, the town does come and help us. Thank you, DPW, for all the work that you do to help us out, along with Matt and Parks and Recs. But we do need volunteers to come in and help us keep it orderly and pretty and nice for the pups. One shout-out does go to Mosquito Joe of Merrimack, who have donated their services to make sure that our dog park is tick-free and mosquito-free, and they've been doing that now. This is year three. So, thank you for that. Not an easy feat when you're surrounded by woods. Other than that, the dog park is wonderful. Dogs are having a great time, always going well. We do have something coming up where we're working on some kind of a memorial bench that's probably going to be going over toward, we haven't decided the location yet. I know that MYA is helping us decide this. I thought something about Reed's Ferry. I'm not a hundred percent sure on it, but that's one of the things that we are working on next.
Is that Jack's? Is that the Jack Woods?
Yes.
Yeah, so, it's on Reed's Ferry.
I got it right then. That was a good guess, thank you. All right, community events. So, one of the biggest problems that we've had is cold. We don't get it anymore. So, our ice skating park last year was open for three or four days. And this year, I think it was two or three days. It's just not cold enough to stay cold, and if you try to use it when it's not, it damages everything else. So, but we're not giving up on that either.
Oh, good.
In the meantime, throughout two thousand twenty-three, we had all of our events that take place. We have a winter carnival that happens in February. We have our Easter egg hunt that happens, well, usually the weekend before Easter. Kids are having a lot of fun with it. I won't bring in details. I know that a lot of people come and visit these things. Please come check the Parks and Recreation website and register your families. There's no cost to register, but it helps to get all of the information to come to your email box. Then, of course, we had the summer concerts in the park. We tried the movies last year. We're going to try something different this year, like I was talking about. We had Fourth of July, we had the parade. The Rotary Club also does their Rotary picnic. We had DJ Roy there as well, and then we had the fireworks at night. We've had Natticook Five-K Challenge Race. We had an obstacle course last year that was quite interesting. It included, they're not surfboards, but anyway, they had to cross across these boards that were attached in Natticook Lake. Nobody came out dry. But it was summertime, so it wasn't too, too bad, or it was at least late spring. So, it wasn't too, too bad. We had our Halloween party, which usually happens around Halloween. We have it in the daytime. Kids love it, because there's smores, and it's so much fun seeing all of the kids all dressed up. It's also fun seeing the adults dressing up as well, which keeps life very interesting. Of course, we've got the Turkey Scavenger Hunt that happens right before Thanksgiving. We had, this particular year for the, I think it was the Halloween, when we had a pumpkin race. It was the first time we had a pumpkin race. So, people brought in pumpkins, they had wheels attached to them. We started them at the top of the hill, at the beginning of where the Recreation Building is, and they went down the hill. One or two of them went straight for a little ways, but it was lined with hay bales, so the crashes were not too dramatic. And then we did have the final race, which was who had the best crash. Next year, what we're going to try to do is actually have an event right before the pumpkin race, teaching people how to put together their pumpkins for the race. So, it should be even more interesting. Christmas time comes around, of course. We have the Christmas Parade at the beginning of December. And in conjunction with that, we also collect people who are interested, their addresses, who want to show off their Christmas lights. The only requirement is, is that they have to keep their lights on for a certain period of time. And then the towns have been putting together these lists. And there is also an app that's attached to it so that you can plug in where you want to go, and it can actually create a path for you so that you're not zigzagging all over the county. It works out really great, and it's kind of fun when you're driving around. You know that the people that are driving around this car train that's going, the caravan, everybody's stopping and looking at the lights and looking at the same paper that you are. So, we are, I have to say this. I know I was told not to, but I'm going to say it anyway. We are always looking for fields. We know that there, you know, we need fields. MYA needs fields. Our kids need fields. Anybody who's listening, if you have property. But I do also want to give a shout-out on that note to Katanga, as well as Elbit Systems, who allow MYA to use their fields when they need to. So, thank you for that. And also, the Lions Club that comes in and helps pretty much in just about every little thing that goes on with respect to Parks and Recs. Let's see, Paul covered the camps, he covered the community gardens. So, we got, we have a lot of scouts that are coming in, both from the Boy Scouts, and did I hear that correctly? They're changing their name to Scouting America. Love it. So, both, prior to that change, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts have come in, and they've done different kinds of projects for various locations around the town. And Wasserman Park does get a lot of those projects, so it's a lot of fun. One of the Young Girl Scouts was cleaning up the theater building that was, and creating the wings and doing some construction in there. And so, that's been going on. and, and doing some construction in there, and so that's been going on. We also have a new trail that goes around the dog park, a biking trail that one of our townspeople wanted to put together, and so they created that around the biking trail. Um, the, we have a student rep that was new bef- since last year that I was here. His name is Matthew Brown. Um, he's, I, I believe he's either a freshman or a sophomore, and so we're gonna get to keep him, hopefully, for a long period of time, right, Mackenzie? Um, he is great about collecting information from the students and, and really bringing in information that we weren't, you know, we weren't able to get before. He is very energetic about it, so we're very excited to have him there. Um, as far as the actual members of the committee, we have a full complement. We actually have no open positions. It doesn't mean we don't accept volunteers to come in and help us with things, but we actually have a full complement, and I would like to go through that really quickly, and then I promise I'm done. Um, we have, uh, Matt Kisparius, of course, as our director, our leader, our chief. Um, I am the chair, and then Christine Lavoy is the vice chair. Mackenzie, from Town Council. We have Michelle Creswell, who's our secretary, Naomi Halter, who's the school board rep, Maureen Hall, who's the senior citizen rep, Rick Grignier, who is our MYA rep, Matthew Brown, who's our student rep, and we have members Phil Przbyzuski, Josh Toms, Julie Poole, Laura James, and Heather Fairbanks, um, who is new this year and is also working on putting together a dog park committee. So, I wanted to thank the Town Council for all of the support that you have given Parks and Recreations, supporting our projects, supporting our ideas, helping us get what we need to get done, giving us Mackenzie. Um, she's been a wonderful addition to our, although we also do miss Lon. Um, rest in peace. But Mackenzie has been doing a great job trying to fill his shoes, and thank you all very much. Do you have any questions for me?
We, we love your committee, and Matt and everything around it. It do a wonderful job. Um, does anybody have anything?
No, it sounds great. It has been great.
Exactly.
I went to the, uh, Mystery Dinner Theater thing that was held recently and enjoyed the heck out of it. So, I, I know there are tons of programs that Matt's been working on, that you guys work with him on, and, uh, I think it's a, it's a hidden jewel in the town. I think not enough people really understand what's available. So, hopefully, some of them pay attention to this and get out there and find out what's, what we can do.
We hope so. We, uh, Matt keeps, you know, keeps the, uh, website going. We pass these out. We're at every single event, sharing all of the information. We have flyers at every event to make sure that people know everything that we're offering. They're, they're for all age groups, and I mean all age groups, from zero to ninety-nine. And, um, as far as the Mystery Dinner, I, I don't know if it sold out this year, but that one sold out for a couple of years. And then, of course, um, the O'Leary Center and the seniors.
I didn't even know there was a dog.
You wondered whether that was, huh?
No, I just saw this little head come out.
The O'Leary Center and the seniors would probably want me to say they're gonna do as many trips as they possibly can because they really like making their trips. So, all right, thank you very much.
Hold on, Tracy, hold on just.
I just wanna thank you for you and what the committee is doing because I did go to the pumpkin thing last year. It was the funniest thing. Watching these pumpkins try to go, "Mew, mew." Anyways, thank you for all you do.
I, I kinda wanted to crash us at the end. We have a lot of fun doing what we do. We have a lot of good people that have fun doing what they do, and it's, it's, it's just nice being able to bring the community together. So, thank you.
Thank everybody for us. Thank you, Tracy.
I will.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing. The council hold, to hold a public hearing to consider recommended changes to Chapter one eighty, temporary sales locations and vendors of the town code pursuant to Charter Article Five.
Oh, look at.
You were up there, right? Looked over here, and you were gone.
We have to take it off the table first, or?
Yes, you have to, please.
I move to take the discussion about Chapter one eighty off the table.
Completely forgotten. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Barbara. Um, all those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven, zero, zero. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight I have, uh, Sharon Marunich with me as well. Um, she really did a lot of the yeoman's work on, on Chapter one eighty. Um, first, I'd like to say that Chapter one eighty, the reason why we're coming back in front of the council with Chapter one eighty, um, was through, because we have to remove the mobile food vendors from this chapter, and they got moved into Chapter one thirty-six because the state did away with the hawker and peddler's license, uh, requirement, and as such, we had to do, uh, remove that section. While we removed that section, we said, "Let's shore up, uh, some of the other loopholes that were out there." Um, first, I'd like to say that, uh, you know, we talked about, um, uh, gave a little bit of a license requirement, and all persons who travel from town to town or place to place in the same town, offering to perform personal services or household repairs or improvements, or solicit or induce any person to sign any contracts related to household repairs and improvements, must, before engaging in such activity, apply to a town council and receive a license under this chapter. What that will do is it'll help the police department out as well. Um, there's requirements that any one of these vendors would have to register where they're going to be with the police department. Police department gets a lot of calls from people. "Hey, I got a strange car in my neighborhood." "Hey, I got this guy knocking on my door." And if we don't know that this is an approved service for the town, they have to send the patrolman out there. We will still, if somebody's questioning things, we will still send patrolmen, but at least we'll be able to say, "Nope, we are, just ask them to see their license. If they show you the license, they've been vetted through the town of Merrimack already, and we know they're in your area." And that kinda settles some of the, some of the angst of individuals. If they still want somebody to come out because they don't feel comfortable, the police will send somebody. So, it's not gonna be like, "Nope, we're not gonna send anybody." We still send people out there, but that's one of the changes. Um, and then, uh, the other app, uh, the other addition is that vendors licenses must submit no later than seven days, business days prior to the event to get a license. What happens a lot of times is they come in at twelve-thirty on a Friday, and they wanna sell Friday night or Saturday. And we're scrambling in, in the town manager's office to get this done. In the summertime, when people are on vacation or taking Friday afternoon off, that falls on other people in the department to do things, and sometimes things do get overlooked because if you're not doing it on an everyday basis. So, we put this seven-day, uh, requirement in, and that's also in Chapter one thirty-six. Um, we took out the hawker and peddlers, like I said, from the agreement. The next big change is underneath license exemptions. Um, basically, um, we, we kinda put charitable organizations would provide service and benefits to the public. A charitable organization must still complete the top section of the temporary sales location and vendors. This is for those, those charitable organizations that are, are working on, um, doing like, uh, Wags to Whiskers or something of that sort. They still need to fill out the, the top portion. What we did to close up a loophole is that we said, unless a charitable organization is running, coordinating, and organizing the event, in which case the above exemption applies, the mere involvement of a charitable organization does, does not exempt or accept a non-charitable organization from fully licensed requirement of this chapter. So, just because somebody is running an event, um, XYZ nonprofit is running, is, is in charge of the event, but they're not running it. They're just named as a partner in the event. They're not really running it. The for-profit businesses still need to get licenses in, in this, uh, organization, in this, for craft fairs and things of that sort, when they're on the outlet mall, for example. They're running it through a nonprofit organization, but they're just that in name. They're partnering with a for-profit business. Those for-profit businesses need to get licenses. That changed. In the one eighty, the current one eighty, they don't have to get, those pro- for-profit businesses don't have to get a license. In the future, one eighty, if this gets approved, they'll have to get the license. Just the mere presence of a not-for-profit. There is one other thing that we would like to talk about a little bit, and I left this off because I figured we need to discuss this with the council. Um, for license requirement, any public school further, a public school is exempt per se, and application to its council is not required. So, that will be if they're holding a book sale at the public school, or they do those Christmas fairs at Thornton's Ferry, Reed's Ferry, Upper Elementary School, they're exempt from doing it. But I didn't put that in there. That would go underneath one eighty dash three. I didn't know how the council felt about that. That would be added language to Chapter one eighty dash three. It would be one eighty dash three, let, number three. B three.
So, that's not here.
That's not there, but that's what I'm recommending. I just wanted to get to the council.
Did you say all schools, uh, public and private?
Any public school further, any public school exempt per se, and an application to Town Council is not required.
What about a private school?
Private school would have to come in, and they, they would get, if they're not-for-profit private school, they would have to fill out the application, but they would be.
Not-for-profit, that would cover it. Okay.
That, that would cover them. But pro- public schools was, can be covered underneath the law.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Barbara, yes?
I just wanna make sure I understand. So, if the VFW, or one of the churches, or the American Legion decides that they are going to host a craft show, a craft fair, on their property, in their building, they still have to come in and get a license?
They, they would just have to fill out the top part. They wouldn't have, it's no fee for the license. They just need to tell us they're doing it.
Okay, so that needs to be clearly stated.
Yeah, the top part, yeah. It is. It says, "A temporary organization must still complete the top section of temporary sales location and vendor application." That is, um, one eighty dash three, B one. It's in B one.
And I would say that the same applies to the schools, and here's why. If you've ever been to the Reed's Ferry School, when they do their Christmas fair, traffic is up the, up the road, and parking is all over the place. So, just bec- I think our police force needs to know that that's going on, and therefore, they should be doing the same thing and just doing the top part, and don't get charged.
Okay, we can, we, that's why I brought it up for discussion, to see how you wanted to do it.
Only because I've been to it, and it's like, you know, the parking is up the wazoo.
That's okay. It's just, uh, top of the paper application saying the dates, what they're, what they're doing.
And that way, and that way, you know, fire and police know what's going on at any particular location.
Yeah, we can, we can make that change, and it'd be the same thing that, uh.
Be just as easy, rather than.
Yeah, just the number one, a charitable organization or any public school must still complete the top section of temporary sales warrants. We can put it right there.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that, or?
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I'm just not sure why you wanna put public school in there. Uh, they're basically a charitable organization. I mean, they're not a for-profit.
Yeah, that, when we talk to our legal representatives, our lawyers, that's, they brought this.
They wanted, they wanted to call out public schools.
Call out public schools.
As opposed to private schools.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
You can say all chara- non-charitable, non-charitable, including schools, something like that.
Yeah.
Including schools. Yeah, including public schools.
Including public schools. Yep, we can do that.
Fine.
Okay, um, so moving on, um, with, there's some cleanup of languages. Um, you still need to register with the police department, one eighty dash five. Um, vi- and then what we're asking for is vehicle information, dates and times, and routes followed during those times, or any other information that the police department requires, so that they're informed and the dispatch can be informed of where these people are, are, um, going door-to-door.
Okay.
Um, the next one is, uh, one eighty dash eight, colon, uh, number, um, one eighty dash eight on page five, on page six, actually.
Nancy, did you want?
I did. Thank you. I just have a question on page three, the one eighty, uh, dash four, canvassing hours restricted. So, there's a, there's an, a morning, uh, restriction time, but we don't, there's none in the evening?
It says occur from dusk to nine AM, so they can't canvass from, from.
So, they're restricted, yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, basically dusk. We don't wanna put a time because June twenty-first is eight-thirty.
Gotcha. Right.
Dusk changes a lot.
Sorry. Yeah, I missed that. Thank you.
We don't wanna, in September, eight-thirty is not a viable time for people to be knocking on people's doors. So, yeah.
You're skipping page four, H?
Four, H. Um, yeah. Um, a list of all other municipalities with a person's entitled will, entity will transact temporary sales vendor business and a copy of the sales vendor license issued by all listed municipalities. That's if they're doing other work in other municipalities.
I know, but if they're in five communities as well at Nashville and stuff, they're supposed to provide us with a copy of their license for all those communities? What, what business do we have with their licenses?
Go ahead, Chair.
So, the, so the criminal background checks that are required, if we know that they've gone to other communities, we can check with those communities to see if they've done the criminal background check, and we're entitled to that so that we don't have to have them going out to get it. They can, we can just get a copy of it. It's got contact information on those permits. Um, we could also ask for that information, so if you don't want specifically copies given to us, that's fine. But we would need their information as to where they have other permits.
I mean, I can understand getting information, but, but requiring a copy of all of their different licenses seems, seems extravagant to me, but.
If they, we, we can look at that and, and, uh, if it's happened in, within the last six months of them applying to us, if they're in a community. If they apply to a community, say, June first, and then they're at us in January, no, we want a up-to-date, uh, background. We criminal background check on who's there.
Yeah, but again, you just need to know that they're going into other communities, right, or which other communities?
Well, the reason why we're asking for the other communities is because some of them do require background checks, and it would be on their application. So, we'd be able to call those communities and see.
We can delete the copy of the sales license issued in those communities, if that's what the concern is. We can just say we want a list and contact information.
Right, because it would be a benefit, I think, to the vendor, um, keeping it simple so they didn't have to go through that whole process again where they've already had it done.
Well, I understand the, the list and the, and the information, but, but having to go collect six copies?
No, and I'm with that. Would that, would that change?
We don't, we can cross that out. Yeah, we can cross that out.
Does that, yeah, does that serve the purpose you need, Chair?
Yeah, we're just trying to make it a little bit easier for some of these guys, 'cause some of our vendors do sell in Nashville. They do sell in Bedford. They do sell in London Dairy. So, if they have to go through, or Hudson, who have some of these requirements, if they do go through this, why make them go up to Concord and spend another thirty dollars to do a background check?
I, I fully agree with that comment, yeah.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, the fee structure is the same as in one thirty-six. Uh, fifty dollars for a one-day, um, a seven-day is a hundred. A year is two fifty, and then, um, we, if they're gonna do more than an annual, the second, third, um, uh, locations are, are the same. Fifty, a hundred and fifty, um, like we did a multi-tier approach with one thirty-six. Um, really, the rest is just adding certain languages and crossing off, selling food. We don't do sell food anymore because that's in one thirty-six. So, one eighty dash eight, three, that was crossed off because that's in one thirty-six. Now, we don't, we're not handling food in one eighty anymore.
Right.
Um, the next one I wanna bring to your attention is number nine on page six, um, and that basically says that this is done, "To sell, offer, solicit, for sale any goods or merchandise on any town-owned property unless expressly approved by the town council. This is done at a public meeting. A complete agenda request form must be submitted to the council along with completed application package." So, if somebody wants to go and sell that bice's field on a Saturday, they have to come before the council and get permission. Um, that's been in one eighty forever. We just clarified the language 'cause we had a couple of vendors come in and say, "Well, what does that mean?" And this is what it means. If you wanna sell on town property, you have to get permission from the town council. And we both, we have that same language in one thirty-six as well. Um, and then, uh, we revised, uh, safety requirements. We, we, we deleted that because that really talked about, um, food vendors. Um, number nine, eight, one eighty-nine on page seven, uh, health and sanitation. We, we reserved that for future, but that also talked about food vendors, so we, we don't need that. Uh, one eighty dash ten, safety requirements, that was also part of the food vendor. We reserved it for later use, but we crossed that out. Um, miscellaneous, um, adjustments for selling and peddling and, and, you know, instead of hawker peddler and license, instead of licensed peddler on the next page. Yeah, and then we crossed out, um, basically A because that was talking about hawker and pedo licenses in the RSA that it, it pertained to, so we took those out because the state changed the law there. Um, the license, and then we added, sorry, "The licensee shall provide a copy of their approved Merrimack temporary sales license or vendor license to the Merrimack police or anybody else upon request." Basically, they have to have it on their body. They can't just, uh, say, "Oh, I left that at home." If you leave it at home, too bad, you know. You can't, you stop.
Does this say, it, it says sales locations and vendor license. Is that two different things that they have to provide, or?
No, it's all on the license itself.
Or is it, is it a sales location or a vendor license, or the, the whole thing is a vendor license?
It's, it, we call it a ven- the, we call it a vendor license, but it's sales location and vendor license for both as one.
Oh, okay. I get it. All right, thank you.
It's an N, yeah. And then, of course, the, um, the last one is, is one eighty dash seventeen, and basically that says that, uh, um, if anything in this, is, is, uh, this chapter is, or application to any person, his circumstances held invalid. The invalidity does not affect the other provisions in the application. So, if the state decides to change something later on, it's not gonna void the whole permit or just void that section. And those are the changes that I had for one eighty.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Open the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll be opening the public hearing at, uh, seven fifty. Anybody who would like to speak to this, please step to the mic or have a seat over here. Paul and Sharon. Hi, Chris. Thank you. Chris Christensen, 27, Great Stone Drive. On the issue of the, one of the last items you mentioned, about getting a license and getting permission from the town council, because you meet every other week or even less often in the summer, you might want to add or designate so that the town council could give that authority to Paul for certain circumstances, or Matt Gasparius if it's something going on in a park or whatever. I can see where people would have timing problems if they have to get on the agenda, which always is sometimes delayed.
Good point. I am the designate for the town council on it. You just want it always, town council always wanted a, if they were selling on town property, town council always wanted to hear, hear it and approve those applications.
Do we need to put this in here for you?
So.
Right, because I, I think it was in the parks.
Originally, I remember that. I remember it.
I, I could also put in, we can add, put in the sign file at the, at your discretion, so that if you wanted a, at the chair's discretion. You wouldn't have to come to a meeting, you just have to.
Get approval from the town council.
Approval from the town council.
Through the town manager's office or something.
Right, through the town managers. Yeah. We're just trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to close the loophole. It's point, the points we're taking, we're just trying to close that loophole up that they're coming in on a Wednesday, oh, I'm selling on Friday, you have a town council meeting on Thursday night. Just put it in your sign file. We, we're just trying to close that loophole up a little bit.
Well, you've already got the seven days.
Seven days, right, which, which also talks about that. So they have to get it seven days prior. So the only thing I could see is like in July, when you meet once, of course, yes, it might be a point where you're not going to tie in.
So if you put it in the sign file without having to do a meeting.
Right, meeting or sign file.
I, I remember a conversation about it, but I cannot remember why.
I can either. I agree with you.
Why we kept it coming to the town council?
Yes.
Just to keep some level of control over it.
Yeah, you, basically, I guess, and I remember it was, it was during the Eileen era here that that came up. And it was because of a hot dog vendor.
Was that the one down at Watson?
That, it was the hot dog vendor at Watson, but there was also a hot dog vendor that wanted to sell on this property right here.
Deputy dogs.
Yeah, yeah, deputy dogs, right. And I think that's, that's what, I think that was, what was the issue is that, that it was approved, one of the areas was approved and one of the councilors said, why are they selling on town property?
Right, right.
And that's why that changed to say this back this way. That's what I believe.
I think you're right.
My, my brain's a little foggy tonight.
You pulled it back for me. That was a miracle. Nancy?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest to meet the spirit of what you're trying to do and not get too many players involved, would it be okay to say something like, to meet at the, the town council, as long as it's a seven-day meeting, should the town council not have that meeting within seven days, then that could step in? So it's not one of the other, it's not automatically assume, oh, I'll, I'll just wait and it, and skip the seven days and go to the.
No, it's either you have to provide it seven days. If a meeting isn't going to be held within the seven days.
Yes.
Then it can be put in the sign file.
There you go.
For, for approval.
Because I think.
Yes.
It's kind of coming much more clearly in my mind now what triggered that whole thing. And so.
It was the two hot dog vendors. One wanted to sell here, one wanted to sell at Watson, and then all of a sudden, the one at Watson wanted to sell at Bice, and then they wanted to sell at Martel. And I remember the conversation going around at, at that point.
And it was members of the council at that point in time also that didn't want, didn't want people just showing up at town hall, being able to vend.
And I think if they don't plan ahead, they run the risk. If councilors have questions and it's in the sign file, they may be denied because they haven't had the conversation.
Right. Yeah, but a lot of that changes though, too, if they're food vendors. I don't, I don't foresee somebody wanting to sell rugs at town hall or at Watson Park. They might want to be at Watson Park, but not at town hall. It was more of the food vendors that we, we get involved with that. But that is, since 136, she's approving the food vendors and the locations. But I think the locations of 136 still say they come to you. So it's, we're trying to mirror up the two.
Okay. So we're all set for the moment. If anybody further would like to just have a, talk about this, seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing at 7:55.
So I'd like to know where we ended up with that.
Well, that's, I want to be, also make sure that these little changes that we've got coming up are okay to bring it to a final reading.
I don't think any of them are really material. We didn't really materially change the intent of 180 with adding public schools, for instance, on 183.
Right.
And I don't think we're really materially changing, I'm trying to get to that section. Number nine, where we say, this, this is to be done at a public town council meeting. A completed agenda request form must be submitted to the council. However, if the request, if, if no, if no town council meeting, however, if no town council meeting within seven days, then, seven days, then it will be able, will be put into the sign file for approval.
So I, I feel like just saying seven days, we, we only meet every other week, so there's lots of times when there wouldn't be one within seven days. And I feel like that totally circumvents the idea of coming out to a public meeting and, and having people aware of what's going on. Part of the reason of going to a public hearing is so that people can see that there's going to be something going on, on town property. And they can object if they want. They can come and make comments. So I'd, I'd either like to extend it to two weeks or, or, you know, something like that, just so that there's a reasonable chance.
That's what Sharon just whispered in my ear, fourteen days. She was, she was thinking the same thought to you.
So that there's still the opportunity to come to a public meeting and have the public more aware, because in the sign file, the public has no clue what's, something's going on.
Yeah, the only, there could be one in July.
Yeah, in the summertime. But hopefully people are, are not spur of the moment deciding they're going to do something like that. They're planning ahead.
Well, hopefully they would all plan ahead with an event and things. So it, it could be the fourteen day. Once again, if you make that change, the fourteen day, it's not changing the intent of this.
Right, no, I understand.
So we can move on. We'll just have to make sure we make whatever the council wants to.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, just saying that we're going to put something in the sign file makes me a little nervous, because a lot of times, we don't get that sign file until we're at a council meeting, which would kind of, you know.
Then it's denied.
Abolish that.
Then it's denied if it's not signed.
Yeah, it's not signed by at least four, four councilors, it's denied.
I like the idea of moving it to fourteen days to eliminate that problem.
That diminishes the occurrence.
Yeah, it won't eliminate, but, yeah. So.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, we just put that in there, fourteen days in advance, if that's what the council wants.
I, I think it's a good idea. Okay. Any further comments, questions, conversations? Seeing none, it was a pleasure.
Did you, you closed the meeting already?
I did, it's 7:55.
We need to move this to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. I moved it, we, I moved the chapter 180 updates to our next meeting consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I oppose or abstain, 700.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Again, that's the third reading, so if somebody does have difficulty with that, they can contact councilors and get them to pull it from the consent agenda to have a further discussion.
And it's easy to do.
Mm-hmm.
Nancy? All right, excellent agenda. Legislative updates for our representative delegation. Nancy, did you have anything?
Sure. Thank you. I'll try to be fast because a lot of things happened in Concord today. And just sort of give you the Reader's Digest version, the titles of bills rather than everything they did. House Bill 398 was a House bill and the Senate concurred. It was relative to notice of PFAS contamination prior to the sale of property. That passed today in a vote, a voice vote. Another one, allowing the, Senate Bill 537 with a fiscal note, allowing the process, processing of absentee ballots. This was a bill, municipal clerks wanted the opportunity to begin processing absentee ballots prior to election day to allow for better time management of the process, and that was indefinitely postponed. SB 413, relative to civil actions for PFAS contamination. It creates a private right of civil action for a certain PFAS contamination. And that passed today by just ten votes. It had a amendment on it that was relative to housing that, and that obviously passed. SB 576, relative to the reporting of the death of voters. The Secretary of State opposed this, and as well, Department of Health and Human Services, but it passed today, 182 to 180.
What was the number on that?
That was SB 576.
So what was that about?
Reporting, relative to the reporting of the death of, of voters, it was a, it, it was a reporting requirement that the Secretary of State and the town and city clerks and Department of Health and Human Services thought was unnecessary because they, improvements in the reporting system would catch that. But this was an additional bill that would require this, this, and I don't know how, I don't know what the process is because I don't have the bill in front of me, but it did pass. So.
By 182 to 180?
Yeah, pretty close.
In the House?
Yes, yes. As, yeah, so it passed the Senate and it, it passed the House today. Senate Bill 383, this was relative to local task tax caps. It passed today, and that's requiring towns to use a formula to estimate town and school district budgets. And it requires school dis, uh, school budgets of the, to use the average daily membership in residence to determine their budget. SB 532, that passed as well. This is relative to requiring municipalities and school governing bodies to post on their official town or school websites within thirty days the amount of funds received by the state, either by allocation or grants. Most towns do that anyway, but that passed as well. Another one, Senate Bill 589, relative to wastewater surcharges. This is enabling legislation, and it allows municipalities to opt to cooperate to share wastewater services over municipal borders. That passed in a vo, a voice vote. Another one that I just think would be interesting for law enforcement, relative, it's SB 426. It's relative to the transportation of marijuana in a motor vehicle or OHRV. That passed as well, and it basically adds marijuana to the statute for transporting alcoholic beverages, prohibiting carrying it or transporting it in the passenger area of a vehicle unless it's in the original unbroken packaging. And it does not apply to therapeutic cannabis. And the last one was a bill relative, it's SB 63, and that's relative to public health ordinances and pub, public health officials allowing them to make regulations relating to public health. And that passed by five votes today in, oh, excuse me, six. So, and that's it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Sure.
Paul, did we get any emails that you noticed?
Nothing, sir.
There's nobody else here. Okay. Tom, manage the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The retreat, as was mentioned, is June 19th. If the town council has something they would like to see on the retreat, please provide that to my office by June 8th, so we can get the background information. Just a little bit on this, I know it's going to be a late night, so I'll make this real quick. The way we're going to be doing the treat, we're meeting on May 24th with the facilitator, and we're going to make some changes to how we, for backup and things of that sort at the retreat, to make it more beneficial for everybody, so that in the last two hours of, after lunch, we're not scrambling to try to cover twenty items. So we'll, we'll make some changes. But if there's anything that the council wants to see discussed, please bring it forward by June, June 8th, and we'll get it done. We'll get it on there. The 800 megahertz system update.
Excuse me, can I request, usually we've asked for the previous agenda items just to be emailed out.
We can do that.
That just helps us prioritize as well.
Yep, we can do that. We'll get that out tomorrow on Monday. Update on the 800 megahertz system. We went before the planning board on Tuesday for approval, because the tower's going to be ten to fifteen feet higher than the current tower, and we're changing it from a monochrome to a regular cellphone tower. The planning board approved that. The next step is to ask our contractor to produce construction drawings. Once those are completed, Verizon then will begin the regulatory filings. We asked the gentleman from Verizon, how long does this typically take? And please don't shoot the messenger, six to eight months. Every time we turn around, it's six to eight months on this, but, but we're moving ahead. We got the approval from the planning board. Hopefully, we can get this tower drawings, regulatory, since it's on the same site, it won't take that long. Going to ask Verizon to see what they can do. Especially, six to eight months would mean that it's going to be through the election cycle in November. So I don't know how things are going to be in, in the regulatory commissions for that. We still, the one thing is, it would be great if they would let us go in there and at least touch the ground and do our geotechnical and all that. No, we can't touch the ground until this is approved by regulatory commissions.
I know that there was a discussion.
You need the design before you can get approved, right?
They, you know, what's wild is that we even said that, we was like, how can we give you a tower design if we don't know the footings and everything else and what we're doing up there, if the ground's stable? Like, just send us, we've done these a lot, and this is how we do them. Just give us a drawing, and we'll bring it to them, saying this is what the tower's going to look like, and this is the location it's going in, and it's going on the same site. So that, that, you know, and that's what they ask for. And the consultant that we're using, TEP, has done this. They, they have partnered with Verizon throughout a lot of the, a lot of their tower buildings, so they have construction designs that they can just, here you go, and file.
I know that we had had a discussion about the tower versus the type of radios, and whether we should go ahead with the radios. Does that ring a bell?
Fire is on the 800 megahertz system. Police is on, still on the digital.
But wasn't there something about the radios couldn't accommodate something? There was something about the radios that were different, and we had talked about holding that off because we were going to get the, the system, but now it's like, maybe we should do it.
The, we, we have, we have bought dual-band radios on all.
Recently?
Yeah, for everybody.
Okay.
They're all dual, we're buying dual-band radios.
That may be what we're.
They're a little more expensive, but we're buying them because the police still are on digital, and if they needed a radio, we'll buy the dual-band, so.
That may be what we had discussed, and you've gone ahead and done it. Okay, thank you.
We are still buying dual-band radios for it. I know this isn't the best news that we wanted to hear, and a matter of fact, when the chief texted me, I couldn't be there Tuesday night. I apologize, I was double-booked. And when, when the chief texted me afterwards, I'm like, are you kidding me? It seems like everything's six to eight months with this, so. But we're moving ahead. We're still moving ahead, so we'll, we'll get there. We'll have a big ribbon-cutting ceremony up there when we're done. Lastly, I want to, our media division, ah, it's, it's unbelievable. They actually been selected winners of three national awards this recently.
Are you surprised?
For Alliance Community Media.
I'm not surprised.
But they have been trying for this, and Nicholas and, and Justin are so proud of this one award that they've won, Democracy in Action Program for Election Night Coverage Live 2023. And they won, they beat every other community media throughout the country and won the first place in this award. So that's a, a huge feather in their cap. Nicholas has been doing election coverage since he started here, basically. And to win the award, it's, it's unbelievable. And it's a great award, but they didn't just win that one. Educational Program Activities Program, Merrimack Moment, Merrimack High School Chop Shot 166, produced by Grace. She won her first award, national award. So that's great news for her. Congratulations, Grace. And then Colin also won an award. So Colin produced the web-based program, Merrimack Moment, We Built That Stole Bridge, produced by Colin Marr. The best thing about this is we have two DPW workers as well, Bob Loving and Bob Burley, who are also getting acknowledged for this award. who are also getting acknowledged for this award.
Awesome.
So the award is going to read Colin Marr with Bob Bur, uh, Bob Burley and Bob Loving from the DPW Department.
Awesome.
To do that, so those are some great awards and the media won it. It's in San Jose, California on June twenty, uh, June twenty-sixth. And I said to Nicholas, you know, maybe we should go, but six hours in a plane out for a four-hour event and six hours in a plane back, eh, maybe not. But no, those are great awards. I wish they were closer so we could, like, they were in New York City last year that we could go and actually accept it. But Nicholas is thinking about it and we'll, we'll figure something out because that's unbelievable. And then finally, I just want to give you an update on the community choice aggregation. I had the meeting. I'll be bringing forward the community choice aggregation to the Town Council on May twenty-third. We need to make a decision on who we're choosing for our vendor to proceed in this process. And that will be on the twenty-third, whether we stay with Freedom Energy and Colonial Power or we use the Collaborate New Hampshire Coalition for electric consumption. But we need to make it because it just, the next step is bringing it to the F, R F C, R P U C to get it approved, the plan approved, and we got to have a vendor to do that. And then we can start, but I'll give you the timeline on the twenty-third, but I did want to mention that that's something that we need and, and we are moving forward for those people in there. And if all goes well, we're looking at a November first, November fifteenth launch date. But it all depends on moving forward as quickly as possible and how fast we can get through the P U C and then bidding and are the bids going to be favorable or not? So. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, that's, that's weird here with all the media stuff, but I'm not surprised. They do wonderful stuff.
They do. They're, they're great, three people and they're all winning awards, which is awesome. But nobody can bring donuts in because the last time they won awards and brought donuts in, Colin got a job at CBS up in Maine, so. They couldn't, I told Nicholas, no donuts.
Absolutely. All right, moving on. On the consent agenda, we have the final reading for chapter one thirty-six, food stir, for, yeah, excuse me, food service establishments of the Merrimack Town Code. Somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. We have no old business. Under new business, we, the council will consider the recommendation to appoint Merrimack High School sophomore Katie Legay as the student representative for the concert, Merrimack Conservation Commission pursuant to Charter Article Six, Section Six dash one B. Is Katie here this evening? She doesn't have to be, I'm just curious now. All right, and what is the, who, did the, I don't recall who was making this recommendation? Was it the school?
Lori Peters.
I saw Lori Peters, but did the school board do that or did it?
Presumably the school board. She said it's only her, but I thought that was kind of interesting.
It should be from the school board from us.
Okay. I didn't know how the student was chosen.
Well, she, Lori Peters is the school board chair, so she wrote the letter to us, so we could only assume that the rest of the school board made the recommendation to us. She is the chair of the school board, so.
I think this is a good position, I'm glad it's happening, so.
I am too.
Somebody like to make a motion? It's like pulling teeth here all of a sudden.
All of a sudden, you're right.
I got a million people waiting to go home here.
Okay, I'll go. I will make a motion that the Town Council approve the recommendation to appoint the Merrimack High School sophomore Katie Legay as a student rep on the Merrimack Conservation Commission pursuant to Charter, Charter Art, I can't even talk, Charter Article?
Six.
Six? Uh, Section Six dash one B.
Second.
Motion by Mackenzie, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? See none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero? Thank you, that's a, that's a good one to have on there. Item number two, council will consider the recommendation of the trustees of the trust funds to appoint Kathleen Share for the alternate member position pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon twenty-two.
There we go. Thank you. Chris Christensen, Chair of the Trustees of Trust Funds. You have the statute and, and other information in your packets, but for the TV crowd, the trustees of trust funds have an opening for an alternate who sits in on the meetings, discusses but cannot vote unless actually replacing a member who's absent or who recuses, recuses himself. So we've had one in the past, it's worked out very well, and we would like to continue to fill that position. You have an email letter from Kathy Share, who is a retired attorney. She has an extended history of working for the state of New Hampshire in a variety of legal positions of significant authority, actually, and we would very much like to see her appointed.
Good. Does anybody have any questions? Nope? All right, and the pleasure of the council.
I move to appoint Kathy, Kathleen Share to the position of alternate trustee to the Town of Merrimack Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Tom Kinnick, seconded by Nancy Murphy.
Which, just a one-year position, right?
Yes. I believe it was.
Yes.
Yeah, it's one year under the statute.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. As long as I have a live mic, something I forgot earlier. The first Saturday in June is the electronics recycling here in the town hall. It's a fundraiser, there is a fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for the reminder. Item three, under new business, the council will consider the recommendation of reappointing Ruth Marie Swisher as a trustee alternate for the, uh, library trustee, yeah, library trustee alternate for the one-year term in accordance with RSA two oh two dash A colon ten and Charter Article Six dash two B.
This is a, this is just a reappointment, Deb's here, but she said I could talk. This is just a quick reappointment of a, a member of the, that's been on the, she wants to reup. And of course, their alternate positions are also one-year period. So Ms. Swisher would love to reup.
Very good. You're all set?
I'm good, that's great.
All right. Oh, you're, you're a savior.
It's an open mic, you should.
All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move to recommend the reappointment of Ruth Marie Swisher as a trustee alternate for one-year term according to RSA two oh two dash A colon ten and Charter Article Six dash two B.
Motion by Tom Kinnick, seconded by Barbara. There's no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or abstaining, seven zero zero? You guys are killing me.
Nancy just told me she's going to get a red paddle so she can raise it so you can see it over here.
Even I didn't see her, I didn't catch out the color.
All right. Welcome back, Chris. The number four, under new business, the council will consider supporting a Merrimack celebration of our country's founding, July fourth seventeen seventy-six. It's a big one coming up.
Semi-quintennial.
Yeah, that's a topic.
Semi-quintennial.
Semi-quintennial. Yeah, say that twice fast.
You win the prize if you can. So in any event, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the establishment of our country is coming up two years, but it takes that long sometimes to plan a, a large event. And I'm here because I need, or I think the town would like to have the blessing of the Town Council and in part because some of the things that I hope we will do will require some, some funding. And one of those, for example, or two of those, actually, the parade and the fireworks, which are funded by the town budget, as meager as it may be this year, I hope there will be adequate funds for it next year or twenty twenty-six. The other side of that is that if you're, if, and I think Matt does a great job with the parade, I hope he will continue and expand, but if you're going to get some of the bands or other parade events, let's call them, you need to sign up way in advance, especially for the two-fiftieth anniversary of the country. People are going to be competing with us and, and I think Matt in particular for those types of things needs to have your blessing in advance to, to go ahead with that. I will remind you that when we did the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary for the town, there was a lot of participation by individuals or groups of individuals, neighborhoods, outdoor, excuse me, other outlying organizations. And I counted once, we had eighteen different subcommittees doing things for that celebration. Now, that was a year-long kind of thing, I'm not sure that we're going to do year-long with it countrywide as opposed to focused on the town, but with the blessing of the Town Council, I think we can put some of those organizations and individuals together and do a bang-up job. So we would probably want to have some blessing again to use town hall meeting rooms, which are normally okay anyhow, to, to get people together and work on that. And one other thought I had that's cheap is that maybe starting in July, when we start the two-month, two-year countdown, the Town Council might do some trivia in your opening remarks. So for example, you might say, why does the state of New Hampshire flag have eight stars on it? Who knows?
The trick question, there's nine stars.
And you can look up and see why there's nine stars, but.
Nine stars? Because we're the ninth and follow one to become a country.
Right.
I thought you said eight.
Or to approve the Constitution. I did say eight. See if you're listening.
See, you, didn't catch you.
Anyway.
Well, he did, because I thought it was eight now, all of a sudden.
Didn't trust you so much.
Are we smarter than a fifth grader? So, does that type of little stuff that would continue to?
Keep interest.
It's a good idea.
Drive some interest within the community if you just do something at, at various meetings to, to point out that it's coming up and I think we'll get some people as, just as a result of listening to the meeting tonight. And I hope maybe we'll be able to get some parade events and maybe a larger number or a bigger concert panel for that summer. Not up to me at this point, just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I'm glad you brought it up because I think it is something that's important and I also was kind of hoping, I heard you say something about wanting to be a big part of the organization, but I'll wait to ask you for that later on.
Now, what did we do during the town's anniversary? Did we establish?
We established a committee, a subcommittee, and there were six or seven members, so one of the things you could do is you can establish a, a subcommittee. Had a conversation with Matt, we've been, we've been working through this. We actually signed a five-year deal to guarantee that we'd have fire, a fireworks provider on July fourth, twenty twenty-six. So we will have fireworks on July fourth, twenty twenty-six. Talked to Matt about bands and trying to get the bands and we all know, you know, Amherst is going to be fighting for them, Nash was going to be, everybody's going to be wanting to do a parade and fighting for the bands. So I talked to Matt a little bit about that and as we start getting our bands for our Fourth of July parade, you know, it's two years out for some of these bands, so, you know, we're trying to talk to them and say, look, we'd launch you for twenty twenty-six. And some of these bands are, don't even know what July fourth this year means to them, but we'll be working with the bands that we normally get. I, I mentioned the Clydesdales, but I can tell you right now, we're not going to get the Clydesdales here in Merrimack. They're going to be in Washington DC or someplace St. Louis, they're going to be in some other part of the country. We might be able to get one Clydesdale, but we're not going to get the Budweiser.
The team.
Team up here. Not to say that we won't call on our friends over at Budweiser and ask them if we can get the team, if we're early enough, but.
They can say no.
They're going to, but, yeah, I, I would see the team being in more of a, a bigger, bigger event.
Bigger venue.
Bigger venue, bigger event.
Bigger than Merrimack?
Bigger than Merrimack.
Wow.
It's, it's, but, you know, there, there are other things that go along with this. I can remember not so long ago, when I was a kid, how the Fourth of July plays out, we used to play out here in Merrimack with the, the Knights of Columbus doing their chicken cookout and, you know, the big mid, midways and things of that sort, so. If you want, we can put something together for an agenda in the next month or the next couple of meetings to just discuss how the council wants to proceed, maybe get a committee together and start working on trying to do some planning for twenty twenty-six.
And I suspect, I mean, I don't know, but I suspect there probably be some coordination with national activities too. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be activities that are going to be national and you sort of work with them, coordinating.
Coordinate, yes, yeah. It's not a big political year, so we're not going to get a lot of politicians in our parade like we do.
Well, that's, that's not the politicians that we need.
Right. But, you know, Matt's been, done a really good job lately of trying to get more bands and more bands that, that, that want to play. And, you know, this is their big time to make some money, but I, we just don't need you to march for the mile and a half. We want you to play and stop and play for the people as well, you know? So he's done a real good job of, of getting them to play more and more. So, but if the council would like, I could put this on the twenty-third or June.
June.
June, June's agenda, just to get the, the ball rolling and see how, if you want to set up a committee.
Perfect.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
I remember the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary, it was Lenny Worcester who did what Chris did tonight. He brought it up and made it happen, happen in things, so, all right.
Thanks, Matt, for already getting involved.
Absolutely. Fifth item under new business is a request for a memorial bench and it reads Ferry, baseball, softball field, I believe it was.
Softball and soccer.
And that's, Jack Lewis was a lifelong resident in Merrimack until he passed away in two thousand twenty-three. He was a soccer and softball coach through the M Y A for many years and the family's requested this memorial bench to be installed at, at a town park, which we have a suggestion. I, is.
Matt's here, he can speak about it a little bit. I just want to say one thing, Ja, Jack Lewis, he was always on the softball field with his daughter. He was always around his daughter, coaching his daughter. There were many a game that Jack was there. My, his daughter and my daughter are roughly around the same age, so I, I've coached, I coached against him for several years and, and, you know, I was always like, why can't my team be as good as Jack's? But Ja, Jack, Jack really did dedicate himself to M Y A softball and soccer, but I remember him through softball more so, so to honor him with a bench down there in that area where he spent a good number of summers and springs and falls, it's, it's a great idea to, to honor. And we don't have any benches out there as of yet, so this will be kind of a new foray in, in getting them out there, maybe other people would, would like to have them too. So Matt's here to discuss anything further. He wanted, they wanted for the Parks and Rec Committee for this.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the original request came into Parks and Rec, obviously, they, they recommended it to you in conversations with M Y A. The thought was Reed's Ferry along the first baseline, which I believe is in your packet there, obviously behind the fence, but as, as a nice location, you know, kind of near where he would have been as a coach.
And they're going to follow, and they're going to follow all the conventions, the criteria that the council has set up for benches and naming.
So, I'm, I'm curious on location because it says, as shown in the picture, and I, I can't, I don't have a clue in this picture.
I'm curious about the location because it says in the letter here, as shown in the picture, and the picture doesn't really give me a clue as to where they're talking about it. Okay. So Reed's Ferry Field One, which is the first field on your left-hand side when you pull onto, onto that street. You've got that little kind of small parking area, you've got the dugout kind of just to your right, you've got the, the porta potties there, but it's kind of obviously the first base side of. base side of, and just to the left of where the dugout is.
Do you have the picture, Matt?
Is that a dugout that's right behind the porta-potty? Or is the dugout over to the right of that?
No, the dugout's behind.
The porta-potty's in front of the porta-potty, yeah. So, here's the dugout, so we're looking at
Right where the barrels are.
Where the barrels are. Where the barrels are now, yes. Effectively, yeah. What is that building to the right?
The
How do you know?
The first building to the right, the one behind the porta-potty is obviously is the dugout, the other one, I think, is a storage shed.
Yeah.
I believe.
With the little fence that goes back around behind it? I would have thought the storage shed was behind the porta-potty there, but, so what do I know?
Actually, the dugout has the fence in front of it, I believe.
Fence in front of it?
Yeah, I believe the dugout has the fence in front of it.
To protect them?
Probably, yeah.
All right, whatever. I mean, so it's going to be behind the, it's actually almost behind the backfield fence.
Yes, the backstop fence, yeah. It'd be more so to the left of it, so that anybody sitting there can actually see the game. They're not going to be looking into the, looking into the side of the dugout.
Right. Yeah. Makes sense, but, okay.
All right, are there any further questions? I'll accept, I need Bill Boyd here again, I'm just saying.
What do you need?
A motion.
So, are you doing it?
Yeah, yeah, how about that? Move to approve the request from the family of Jack E. Lewis to install a memorial bench in one of the town parks, namely, which one was that?
Reed's Ferry.
Reed's Ferry, thank you.
Field One.
Who was a lifelong resident of the town of Merrimack and passed away in 2023.
Motion by Barbara.
Second.
Seven by Nancy Harrington. I got to grab it while I can, it's, I don't know what the difficulty is. It's, I think it's on purpose, you guys are playing me. So, is there any further discussion on the motion? See, no, I'll call, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
They're paranoid.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh my gosh, you're killing me. Which just made it worse, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. It's almost like a challenge now.
All righty. Item six, the council to consider request to release more funds from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund for additional engineering work and to address change conditions on site. Do you think Leo and Dawn are going to be here?
Yeah, Leo and Dawn are coming up. The, the project's coming along beautifully. They sunk the helical piles into the ground this week. They redid the, the hill down by the fire station. They're working on the sidewalk as we speak, but there have been some change orders. And with change orders comes additional funding that is needed. So, Dawn and Leo are here to explain what exactly those are going.
Just make sure your mic's on, guys.
And now, the mood changes.
Yeah.
Don't shoot the messenger, please.
No, no.
In the slideshow.
Yeah, got it. It's late, it's been a long day. Okay, so just to refresh your memory, this is the project that has started back in 2014 and has finally come to construction as of last November. The fire station is, the central fire station is right here. This is the Daniel Webster Highway, which is very light. And we have the trail that's in color. So it starts in Watson Park off of the existing trail and comes down. And then it goes underneath the Chamberlain Bridge, along the power canal, under the gates, and then it comes back out, and then it hits a boardwalk, comes across the wetlands area, and goes on to the existing trail. So it's in many different pieces. And having been started so long ago, the conditions have changed out there, sometimes a little more dramatically. But, as Paul alluded to, it is coming along, so we've made a lot of progress. This is the area, I believe Leo was standing at the top of the head gate, looking down on this. And so we've got a finished trail all the way up and around, up to where the boardwalk is going to start. You'll note that on the left-hand side, there is the berm that they have now put in to keep the river out of the canal. And on the right-hand side, we worked with the fire department, we moved their shed over a little bit. And we've made a nice slope in there, instead of taking out or putting in a higher wall on the right-hand side, we used some of the rocks that were left over, so they match as you're going up through, and it's coming out very, very nicely. This is another one, and of course, the sunlight, we're pointing down right on to our boardwalk here.
Celestial.
So, so it's meant to be, see? You have to take the signs as you get them, right? And this is looking, this is back, you've, in the canal itself, the bridge is right to the backside. I should let Leo do these, because he's the one that took the pictures. And this walks through and then up to the, towards the fire station. This is turning around so that the, the bridge is right over your head, and this is the outlet that they had made going out towards the Watson Park. So you can see, this has all been done out through there. And this is the walls that have been one of our source of contention that we've had to fix because of the bridge. Beam six, and this is beam seven, so you can see how their finished product has come out on that. Now, we moved over this week to doing the helical piles, and they went in much faster than was expected. They had to go down for, they estimated eighty, eight feet, and they went down twenty feet in a lot of, but unfortunately, the speed of which they have done these does not matter. It is the depth is what we pay off of. So, you got to keep that in mind. So even though we've caught up a couple days, anyway, this is the first part. This is the foundation of the boardwalk that's going to be going in. And this is just another view. All of these planks and where the excavator is, is all going to be gone. So the, it's on this side, right? The walk will be on this side of the, where all that is. So, to keep this all in mind, when you do take federal monies and state monies, we have certain constraints we have to follow. So what they do now is we have to have three, what we call major contracts for each construction. We have a design engineer who, of course, has gone through earlier and done all of the design part. They have to stay on just in case things happens. Well, we had to, I came back a few months ago, if you recall, and I had to ask for more money because of all of the problems that we went through, which I did not list them out here today, because we went through them a couple of weeks ago. But I will refresh as we go through these slides a little bit more. We also have the construction company or the contractor that's actually doing the work, and then we have a construction engineer on site. And the construction engineer is the one that's responsible to make sure that we get the product that we are asking for. They are there every minute that the contractor or construction company is out there, so that we know. And they account, they're bean counters, they count for everything, they're inspectors, they make sure everything's in, that we get the product we want, that it's where we want and what we need, and they're there to, you know, basically protect us. So, in engineering, one of the first things you learn is every action has an equal and opposite reaction. Well, that's this project 2AT. So, in all of this, it's, this has led to a lot of delays. It leads to a lot of product delays, which leads to time delays, which leads to monies, basically. It's unfortunate on this project, but, you know, hopefully you've known me well enough that in my past eight years, that most of my projects come in at or below. So, this is the exception to the rule. So the request tonight is for three construction change orders and one construction engineer contract amendment. Now, we've waited a little while, because there's been gives and takes. We've tried to equalize. Unfortunately, things turned and we weren't able to equalize like we wanted to. So, the first change order for the construction company, and the costs are increased were due to the reinforced concrete walls and the footing due to the ledge and all of that. That was on the east side of the bridge that we showed you, beam six and seven. There were a lot of costs that were associated with that. And it basically is now significantly, it's supporting the Chamberlain Bridge, and beam six is doing the sidewalk, I believe that's the way that one works. So, but that needed to be done in order to have safety to walk under through there. So the change order one came in at about $18,000. Now, we still have the 80/20 split. Okay, I want to keep, have that, keep in mind. We'll show that to you in a little bit. Change order two had the reinforcement concrete column beneath beam seven, so we had to add even more to that beam seven as we went along. I don't know if you remember, but back in December, we had some heavy rains, we had erosion, more erosion along the riverbank. And in the time that had taken since we had done the survey, we had lost quite a bit of banking. And that meant that we ended up having to put this big berm in that I showed you, which has actually come out quite nicely, to be able to keep the water from going in the canal, because it was coming in the canal. It was, it was not a good thing. Things were, that wasn't a good day. They removed the retaining wall and graded up the slope, which was a plus, but every plus came with more minuses. So, the increase in the quantity of the helical piles, which I told you, they assumed eight feet to ledge, it's actually 20, and some were a little bit more. And so, the change order two came to 82,000 total. And then, they started to move up on the sidewalk, and as this project has progressed, it has given even more. Every time I turn around, there's more emails, more this, more that. So, the last one was the guard rail, and there's been a number of issues. They had to redesign, put some more concrete. So that came to a total of about almost 16,000. Then all of these changes, of course, the construction engineers feeling lonely and left out, so they put an amendment together. With all of this time, it's going to take an extra 11 weeks, and so that's their labor, their time. So all of theirs is the labor due to all of this added time. And the contract has now been extended to August. So that's when we'll expect to be able to open the trail up. We're waiting for railings and guardrails and things, so I think probably the contractor will leave at some point, because he's finishing up. Next week, the boardwalk itself is supposed to be going in. The contractor has, we have a specialist coming to show us exactly how to put the boardwalk together. So that should be riveting. Anyway, their amendment is about $76,000. So when we put all of that together, we end up with a total of 191,000. And when we do the 80/20 split, we're looking at a town cost of 38,000. But for you tonight, we have to allocate the full amount, which is the 191,370 from the Road Infrastructure Fund, and obviously, 153,096 will be reimbursed by DOT. I did get there, you'd asked the last time to make sure that they were doing the 80/20 split, I've got confirmation of that. So we have the 80/20 split, and we also need to authorize the town manager to sign all the documents. Please and thank you.
It's kind of too late.
Questions?
Almost too late to say no.
I feel like it's a money pit, doesn't it?
This is like the movie The Money Pit. It just keeps coming at you.
But you can't not do it at this point.
At this point, we're in too far, because if we stop and say enough is enough, we have to reimburse every penny that's wanted to this project.
So my question is
Called crab boil.
What's that?
It's called a crab boil, right? They just raise the temperature or raise the cost slowly, so that you're so far into it, you can't get out by the time you get boiled.
So, so the money's going to come out of the fund, so what work isn't going to get done, because now we keep taking money out of that fund?
Can we go back to the money slide, please?
Oops. What if it went the right direction?
What other projects aren't going to get done? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Since we're putting a lot of unanticipated money toward this. Oops. Thank you, sir.
There, there, the thirty, the $40,000 coming into this fund would mean potentially that some drainage work might not be done. However, we're going to do all the projects we have slated to do. There was significant, significant money in that fund, because we did get some windfalls that we were thinking, we were budgeting for, that are now 80/20 splits. The wire road intersection was supposed to be, basically, we tried to get it in to the fund, it wasn't there. We were trying, we were budgeting to pay for that project all on our own. Now that's an 80/20 split. So we backed off some of the funding, because we got the 80/20 split, but we were putting money into that fund for this. Some of the projects may be delayed, maybe a couple of months here or there. Some of the purchase of equipment, because you can, not, not in this one, sorry. We have another one that's coming up, is the, we have another tap grant project, which is the sidewalk from Ride Eight to 360 on DW that's coming up. You know, that, that project, we might delay a little bit, because it's a tap grant and we're going to have to get all these studies anyways, so we won't be spending the money when we thought we were going to be spending the money. So we do have some money built in, up as a reserve, because projects such as this project here and the tap grant, the other tap grant, do not, even though they say they're going to start when they start, they get delayed, delayed, delayed.
As is that, I mean, by that.
I think this one was scheduled to start in 2001, 15? And we're nine years later, and we're almost at completion? I think we, no, I think we went in 2011, 12, and now we're at 2024 and it's going to be completed.
It was fourteen, fourteen tap grant.
Fourteen, oh, fourteen tap grant, okay. So, to answer the question, we do have money set aside in the fund. Some of the projects may be delayed a month or two, but all projects that are in the CIP are, were being funded, and we did have some extra money that we've, we set aside with it. And hopefully, Chris can get us some great interest rates, so makes up this difference by July. And because all this money is setting what the trustee of trust funds, earning interest as well.
So we have to ask, I'm sorry, Andy, did you have? So we have to request, approve the release of 191,370.
Approve the
Which we have.
Yes.
Because we're going to reimburse 153.
Yeah, it's really, yes, because we have to gross appropriate, so you have to, motion to expand and appropriate 191,370 dollars out of the Road Structure, Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund with an 80/20 reimbursement of 153,000 dollars to be reversed by the New Hampshire DOT and the town portion of 38,274.
So moved, and to authorize the town manager to sign all documents.
I had to give you some work.
Second.
That's, now it's discussion.
I'm astounded by the cost of the construction engineer, and I'm trying to understand that a little better. I mean, at, at 75,595 for 11 weeks, which is only three months, they're, they're billing us at a 357,000 a year rate. Is this an individual who's there every hour that the construction company's there?
There is one individual that is there all the time, but there is also a team behind him, and he has to deal with all the federal documents that need to get signed. He has to submit all the payrolls. He has to submit all the payrolls and then go through all the scrutiny. He takes all of the workload.
They also do quite, quite a bit of quality control as well.
I can, can you pull it closer?
Sorry. They also do quite a bit of quality control, too. So in one of those pictures of the helical piles, they hired another subconsultant that was, that specialized in helical pile installation to verify that the piles are going in correctly. So there was quite a bit of quality control that they're required to do as well. So it's not just the payroll of one person or one person and his boss, it's, it's quite a large team of people.
It still sounds like a ton of money when you kind of put it out like this is a third party that, that normally you might not involve in, in a project like this, and, and so...
And we didn't have to pay, this is the first project that we have hit, that we've had to do this. And it's, and that's now what the federal government requires.
But you feel that we're getting a three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar a year value out of this firm? Or is there, I mean, at this point, you can't switch to somebody else?
No, no, and we went through the selection process, and they came in at the lowest amount.
And this upgrade of seventy-five thousand is just an incremental increase on what they billed for the initial, or are they...
Yes.
Gicking us at this point?
Yes, so their total will be, it's about three hundred thousand. So they started back in last July, this is about a year.
So, what's the total cost of this project right now with this amendment of a hundred and ninety-one thousand?
Did you bring the sheet up?
I don't know if I have it.
It's a little over two million.
So, two million dollars, so it's about ten percent construction and then cost?
Yep.
And then another, whatever, what's our, what's our engineer, what was our design engineer?
I don't have his original.
Total, roughly.
A hundred and fifty.
He's now...
So we're looking at, we're looking at about five hundred thousand dollars out of two million dollars for A and E, which is...
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, which, which is a little bit high. It's usually between fifteen and twenty, but hence federal government, money, making us jump through all these hoops, and the state making us jump through all those hoops, have delayed a lot of this project and the time of this project.
And they've changed things in the meantime.
And they have changed things in the meantime. You know, Deputy Chief Charlton can tell you dealing with the federal government on a change order is not the easiest thing in the world when you get a grant or you get money like this.
Granted.
It's a, it's a painstaking, two-week process just to change out a hundred thousand dollars with, with some of this stuff. Granted, is twenty-five percent a high number? Yes, it is. But with the delays, and like we said, right now, if we were on the hook for the two million dollars, we'd be on the hook. They're paying eighty percent of that sidewalk replacement and the, that, the beam six and seven. We might have got lucky and got it in the bridge project, but I believe the bridge project for Chamberlain is twenty-thirty?
Two.
The twenty-thirty-two for that bridge?
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I understand, it just, it does seem very high, and, and trust me, she brings these change orders to me, and it's the same kind of please don't shoot the messenger kind of deal, and Dawn goes back and forth with them to get them down.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, what I wanted to do is just kind of bring that information out and make sure everybody understands what's going on. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, I sure as heck don't want to be, you know, on the hook for two million because we just decided to stop and ninety percent of the way Derek said, we're done, we're walking away. But it just, it's frustrating, and I'm sure you feel that frustration more than I do, but it just seems like a huge expense to have somebody monitor what's going on.
It is not easy coming here, asking for this. And believe me, the team knew about it on Tuesday when we had our bi-weekly, bi-monthly meeting. And I have more gray hair now than I had before.
Yeah, so do I.
Because every day, it's just like one thing after another.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy?
Sure, thank you. I'm certainly no construction engineer, but I'm looking at change order number three, and what, what concerns me is that this is a fifteen thousand dollar, almost sixteen thousand dollar change order, and it said it was based upon, on the need to update current standards around a, a guard rail, but wouldn't the design engineer recognize what the current requirements regulations are?
They changed.
In the, like, the last couple of months?
No, in the last, you've got to remember how long ago we started this project. So aspects of this project were done years ago, and approvals were done, and the standards have changed. DOT changed their standards, you know, along in the process, and the plans did not get updated.
Who, okay, thank you. So who, I mean, given, I think you said like two thousand fifteen or something was the original planning for this?
Fourteen, fourteen was when we got this.
All right, so, I mean, it's nine years, I, it makes sense that things change, but nobody looked when, when we're, you know what I mean? I don't understand, like, why in nine years, nobody thought, ooh, some of these things have may have changed, so that when you were given a price and we were being asked for money, we would know that, I, I don't know, I just feel like in nine years...
I agree with your point because, as you're saying this out loud now, it, the last change order that came up, this, why didn't it show up at that point? All of a sudden, they cut the new thing, so...
Hundred percent.
Dawn, this guard rail was what, at the end of Chamberlain Bridge there?
Yes.
Is that what it is? So, what we were hoping for and what everybody was hoping for is that we could just reuse the, reattach the guard rail to what's, what's on the bridge because we weren't doing a significant upgrade. However, since we touched the guard rail and it's going to be attached now, the feds came in and said, you need to update the guard rail to code. So we have the guard rails on the firehouse side up to code because of our two lovely accidents that occurred there. And now on the other side, we have to update that to code as well, to, to code as well because we touched, we touched it and we didn't think we were going to have to upgrade it, but the federal government steps in and says, nope, you're doing this, you got to do it up to grade.
It's their money.
So it's, it's their money, and it's their rules with how, what you have to do sometimes, and DOT is looking at it going, well, you touched the guard rail, even though you thought you were going to reuse it, you can't reuse it, these are the new guard rails.
Okay. So we, we have a motion by Nancy, seconded by Andy, I think I heard.
No. No, I was going...
So if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Seven zero zero.
Thank you.
I'd say thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Leo.
And hopefully we won't see this again.
Yeah.
Can we cross our fingers?
Nancy, you, you said, you said what I said in, when I talked to Dawn. I've called this the money pit trail.
We're not, we're not killing the messenger. We understand.
They call it, conquered the Frankenstein Trail.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and, and it's, it's a great project, it'll really help the town of Merrimack, it's just, right now, it seems like everything we touch...
Combination of errors.
So, the UNH used this project as one of their senior projects this year, so it was quite interesting to see, because I sat in on their presentations last week, it was quite interesting to see what they had come up with. But they did get the advantage of being able to see some of it, knowing some of the items that we didn't know back when we started and when we dug into the ground, because they came out and started the project after we'd opened everything up, so they were, yeah.
Well, it might have been good if they had allowed us to put sinkholes in the beginning so we would know how deep the ledge was, but...
It would have been nice, but it would have delayed us even...
But I think the university should give us a kickback since they're using our experience as teaching.
Here we go, all right. We'll move on to item seven, counsel to consider request to allow the town manager to sign all documents required to submit the applications for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for four clean water state revolving fund programs. Dawn and Leo.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I get the easy one because I'm not asking for any money.
Yet.
Yeah.
Yet.
Well, so the two thousand twenty-four Clean Water State Revolving Fund program includes four programs, two of which are grants that we want to submit for, and two of which are the typical clean water SRF loans like we've done with Babu Sik Lake. So I'll, I'll just briefly go in through these four items. The first being the stormwater asset management grant. It's a thirty thousand dollar grant through NHDES. It's for asset management programs and equipment to support those programs. So it's not for any infrastructure upgrades or maintenance of infrastructure, but it can be used for this management program. So what we've decided on using this, this grant for is for GPS-enabled equipment so that we can go out and accurately locate our stormwater assets, which are catch basins and stormwater lines and retention ponds and what have you. The second one is the, is a wastewater asset management grant. Same thing, it's a thirty thousand dollar, one-time grant. Both of these are non-competitive as well, so pretty good program. Same thing, it's an asset management grant, so it can be used for asset management programs, can be used for equipment that supports those programs, but it can't be used to actually maintain or build new assets. In this case, the wastewater division is proposing to utilize this grant money for some updated equipment for pipe cameras and...
A what?
Pipe cameras.
Pipe cameras.
So we've got a rig right now, we can inspect pipes, and this will be for an additional unit that can better inspect the larger pipes.
It'll be able to tell where they're at along the surface better than the way we're doing it now, so it'll be a better tracking so we can then pick it up and be able to put it in, right into our GIS system.
And so, bless you. The third program is a clean water SRF loan for Horseshoe Pond. So what we're proposing is a drainage study, just like we did with Babu Sik Lake, with Pine Knoll Shores Drainage Study, for Horseshoe Pond. Now, this is the, their typical loan program, so it has the full principal forgiveness up to a hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we're going to apply for, is a hundred thousand dollar program, so that we'll fulfill that one hundred thousand dollar principal forgiveness.
I do want to make mention that Detective Bill Vander Side used his drone and took these pictures for us because I'm sitting there thinking, how are we going to get this? How, because this is highly competitive. This is not guaranteed we're going to get this. We might, they might only give four or five out and have forty-five applicants, and last year we didn't get this, so we've got to up our game. So we've putting in some photos and we're doing some other things that will hopefully give us more points so that we can get the hundred thousand dollar grant to be able to do this study, because without the study, we can't continue and be able to do further work like we're doing on Babu Sik Lake. So I, I want to commend him, I mean, these pictures came out beautifully, and I thank the police department for being able to, to provide this for us.
Gives you an interesting perspective, doesn't it?
It does. The fourth program here is the clean water SRF loan for the Penachuk Wastewater Pump Station. We'll be able to use this program similar to the, the stormwater program in that it will be used for a study and conceptual design for the replacement of the Penachuk Pump Station. The nice thing is we'll be able to use that hundred thousand dollar program to further our, our goals anyway. It was always in the capital improvements plan to replace that at some point, that station being built, I believe in nineteen seventy-nine. But this gives us a little bit of a leg up, we can get ahead of it by using the state-funded programs.
Tom?
Barbara first.
So, wouldn't that come under the wastewater treatment facilities budget? If it's a pump station for wastewater?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so, but it's mixed in with your presentation overall?
It is. The wastewater asset management grant and the stormwater actually being applied for under one application. The Horseshoe Pond Drainage Study and the Penachuk Wastewater Pump Station are being applied for under two different, separate applications. It really is through wastewater, but I grouped it all together, that way Leo didn't have to come up here.
We're trying to find as much money as we possibly can, so there's four different ones we're pushing out there, but what we really need tonight from you is part of this application, they've changed the applications a little bit as they always do, and they require actually notification or in writing that whoever signs these documents has the authority from you to be able to do it, and I have to have it in writing, it can be as simple as the minutes of the meeting, and so that's why we're here tonight before you is to ask you to be able to have Paul be able to sign all of these applications so that we can get them in on May thirty-first.
Great. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. I'm sorry. The, so each of these comes out to a nice even round number, but are you expecting it to be more or less than thirty thousand for each of those things?
That's it, that's all they do, that's it.
Well, I mean, but your expense, you're, you're...
If we go over, then we have to come up with the extra. They won't. Thirty thousand is all they...
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out, are you looking to spend thirty-three thousand and you needed three thousand from us to go with the thirty, or...
We don't know that yet, but...
Are you looking to spend twenty-seven and...
We're working on the estimates, yeah, we're working on the estimates now to, to get the estimates, and we're trying to get, you know, twenty-seven or thirty thousand or whatever, whatever.
Okay, so this is similar... You just need approval to apply at this point?
Yes, yes.
And you come up with a more hardcore list of what you're going to spend the money on and how much?
And once we get it.
Once, once you get further down the line.
In my mind, these are kind of like our maximums, this is our target to, to hit.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure you're not planning to spend sixty thousand, and you haven't even told us about the other thirty that you're going to have to ask us for, you know?
It's kind of like what we do with some of the police grants, that they have to come in before to the council to say, can I apply? What Leo's doing is, can I apply? And then you're going to have to accept it in a public hearing. The council will have to accept this in a public hearing, and at that time, you'll have the actual expenditure on it, and if it's more than, if, if it's the thirty and you got to spend sixty, we'll give, we'll leave the money, we'll leave the money on the table kind of deal unless it's something that we really need, like, like a drain, you know, drainage study or something of that sort.
Yeah, and the reason I question is because often when the police come in, they say, well, we're looking for a DUI grant, it's going to be for eighty hours at forty-six dollars an hour and, and six different times, and they, they have a more definitive number, and this seems like just a...
We are having a showing tomorrow of one of these units, if you want to stop by.
So the, the other thing with this, these grants is that, for lack of a better term, it's, hey, you got to apply. We have this money, it's set aside for Merrimack, you need to apply. Well, how do we apply? Well, got to get signature, have to have the town manager authorized to sign the grant application for us to apply for the grant.
I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to go in the future with it. Especially, and I, and I just heard from DES last night at the NRPC's meeting about how they have this half a million dollars that, you know, they need to spend by the end of two years from now or something like that, and, and encouraging people to apply for it. You know, it's just like, yeah, okay, what's it going to cost us to use those funds? Anyway, great, thank you.
Nancy? I'd just like to make a motion. I'd like to propose approval of submission of applications for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for four clean water state revolving fund programs and to authorize the town manager to sign all documents necessary.
Seven.
Is that sufficient?
Seconded by Barbara, was that good? Thanks. Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, I'll call the question, others in favor? See none, I'll call the question, others in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 7-0-0.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
If we can, can we take up the default budget next?
Yes. Let everybody go home, no, that would be good.
Oh, you mean the department heads don't want to stay with us?
Well, they want to stay.
Without objection. We're going to move to number 11 on our new business.
Chris, Chris, Lynn is over there making...
Really? I'm sorry.
Oh.
Seemed like some of these would have been real easy to clean up and send some other people home, but...
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we could have.
Would it be, would it be okay, Paul? I hate to ask you, but would it be okay if we get the next couple done, they'd be real fast, they're the scholarship things?
Yes, I'm here for the, nobody's here for those, I'm, they're all here.
Well, Chris is here, right?
I knew they were staying for that, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I thought they were staying for my budget presentation. No, that's fine, go ahead, sorry.
All right, no, 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 that's good, I'm sorry. All right, so, my apologies to everybody out there.
So we're going to stick with...
Counsel will consider, yeah, we're going to go with eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
And it should be quick, yes. Counsel will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $640 from the Bear Christensen Trust through the trustees of the trust funds to be used towards the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
Does somebody want to talk to that, or do you want to just take a motion? I'll be happy to move acceptance.
Chris, did you want to...
I mean, this is something we've done before, and we're really happy to get the funds from the Bear Christian Trust Fund, so I would move that we accept the acceptance and expenditure of the donation of 640 from the Bear Christian Trust Fund for RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8, 15, the town manager's approved to sign any documents.
For camp scholarships.
Camp scholarships.
And express our appreciation for such.
Okay, was motion by Tom Canning, is there a second? Seconded by Nancy Murphy. Chris, did you want to speak to anything at all?
No.
Good? All right, thank you very much for this. All right, if there's, yes? Yes, no, if there's no further questions or comments, call the question. Others in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0. And item nine, the council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $500 from the Bear Christensen Trust through the trustees of the trust funds to be used towards a camp after-school program scholarship pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
So move.
Motion by Tom Canning, seconded by Nancy Murphy. And this is a similar thing that, it's a very nice thing that we anticipate pretty regularly, and we appreciate it. So is there any further discussion? Nope, see none. Call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0.
Again, with great appreciation.
Well, that, yeah, that fund's been turned over to the trust fund.
Thank you, Chris, thanks Lynn.
That didn't take long, see?
Now we can go to 11.
Yeah, we can do 11 now, yeah.
And then come back to 10.
This is the fun part, isn't it, right here?
Now we're back.
Good evening. Come before you for the default budget. Just wanted to make the council aware of, as we know, the default budget, the voters voted on, in April, and our budget failed by 128 votes. While this is disappointing that the budget failed, we understand, and we will make the new budget 38,484,241, which is a difference of 1,294,000 and change. So, looking at the default budget, we had to come up with some suggestions, and that's what I'm presenting to the council tonight, is some suggestions for the default budget. I lumped the personal service and insurances into one category. I'd like to talk about the health insurance first, health insurance savings. Currently, we have 205 full-time employees that are eligible for health insurance. As of May 1st, we approximately had 15 positions open. The town uses an average of health insurance across the board. So I do not budget in departments individually for who or what the health plan is used by those individuals, but an overall average of the 205 employees. During the initial, the initial budget, we had a GMR of over 20%. After the ballot vote, we got a GMR from Health Trust of just over 16%. So there was a savings that we got, just in our guaranteed maximum rate dropping from 20 to 16. At the last council meeting, we talked about potentially using those 15 open positions, and not budgeting them for a full year, but some kind of factoring of that. I factored 80%, an 80% factor, to give us some savings. So by doing the guaranteed maximum and the factoring of 80%, that would save the budget around $161,665. So that's a health insurance savings.
So to clarify, those 15 positions, you're funding the health insurance at 80%?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Correct, because right now, we have in the works of those 15 positions, we have about seven positions in the works that we're trying to hire by July 1st. And then the remaining eight positions will be staggered. We, and there'll be openings throughout the year, so we feel 80% factor would be sufficient. In addition, we have five open positions in the police department at this time, at the time of the memo. As of today, we have one conditional offer out for a police officer, and that we're looking to hire those five positions. Knowing that we have one police officer who just graduated from the academy, one who will be graduating from the academy, this one conditional offer I have, and that when the new contract comes into play on July 1st for the police officers, that was approved by the voters, thank you voters and residents, that we probably will get another two certified police officers. However, just because they're certified police officers doesn't mean that in Merrimack, they get put on the street right away, so to speak. They still need to be trained on the roads of Merrimack and the policies and procedures of Merrimack. If that happens, we'll have five new police officers on the road by July 1st. In talking with the police chief, and having five openings, that will leave me with two additional openings, that we probably won't have filled by July 1st. Because it doesn't make sense to put seven total positions on the street. We have two that we just hired that are coming through the academy, one came through the academy, one is graduating academy, plus the five openings would be seven positions as of July 1st to be put on the street. There's no way we can train seven police officers at once. Can we do it? Yeah. Will it be difficult? Very difficult. So in talking to the chief, we decided to go with a 10/12ths for those additional two positions. And a 10/12ths puts them on the street or hired in September, October timeframe. Which would be good, because of the way the academy, if we don't get a certified police officer, the way the academy runs out. So that's, we factored 10/12ths of two police officer salaries. That will give us approximately savings of $28,600 by doing that 10/12ths in addition. And then, in the police department, we also had an animal control officer moving from part-time to full-time. We're bringing that back, and it will be a part-time position. That saves about $41,000. And we have three applications for the part-time ACO as we speak. So we think that will be definitely filled by July 1st as well. So, that's another $41,000.
Paul?
Yes?
On that item, what was the overall rationale for trying to move that position from a part-time role into a full-time, and now all of a sudden back to a part-time?
The rationale at the time was that we weren't getting any applications. And we thought that if it was a full-time position, we could, we could get some applications in there. It used to be a full-time position in the town of Merrimack, and so we thought that we could get people to apply. Just so happens that we have three applications. One of our part-time individuals who used to work for us in that role had to leave for family matters. Those family matters have cleared up, and he applied and wants to come back and work part-time. So that was, that's why we're going back, and we think that part-time will work with that position. In our fire and code enforcement department, we have one part-time secretary position that is open. In talking with the fire chief, we have a new building permit software coming through. Fire chief at this time, he reserves the right in the future, but at this time feels that that position can be eliminated. Because of the software and the employees, the new employees in that department, we have a new secretary in that department as well. So with the new secretary and the new software, he feels that that part-time position can be eliminated from the budget. It is not a filled position, so we're not laying anybody off, we're just eliminating an empty position in the budget. And that's approximately $31,300. And then the other one was that fire overtime. And looking at the fire overtime, they had live-fire training of $30,000 budgeted, for in the budget. Talking to the chief, he felt that with the fire academy and other things, that they could do training up there, instead of going to a live-fire training, meaning that if a surrounding community was going to burn down a house, that our crews would go and experience that kind of fire. Through the fire academy, they have classes, they can go up through the classes. And saving that $30,000 in overtime really equates to about $41,700 of overtime savings with benefits. Lastly, the town clerk tax collector position is an elected position, and by such, the town council does the budget for the, an increase for her wages and puts it into the budget. The residents, when they vote on the budget, affirm that salary. Well, since the voters voted in the default budget, technically, the salary for that position stays level. And we had about $4,000 pay raise with benefits for the pay raise. So that would go back to being a level-funded position for a year with no pay raise because of the way it works. And we talked to our attorneys, and which she says is surmised in the operating budget, but means that the salary is set by, in the operating budget, no ups and downs without voter approvals. So because the voters didn't approve our, the operating budget, the position doesn't get a raise. And that's by our attorneys, that brought that forward, when I asked them that question. And then I had about $55,000 in an incentive line item, and that money was to be used for $5,000 for incentives, and $50,000 in case I had to bring people in at a higher than the budget. And looking at this, I think that I can reduce that line item by about $30,300. And we'll just have to be more cognizant of when we bring people in and the salaries that we're bringing them in at, and looking at what was in the budget. It's a very tough economy out there sometimes. I'm hoping that the ladies and gentlemen behind me stay for a long time now, and that I'm not looking to fill some of those positions, so that, you know, we can, we can hopefully get back on track with our hiring and move forward. The one position I did bring forward in the budget for positions was one full-time position for the assistant technology coordinator. I really still feel that is a need of this town and not a want. I had some data, basically, if, just bear with me for a second. Right now, we have two people in the IT department. Their responsibilities are for roughly 282 private firewalls, routers, printers, individuals, tablets, desktops, laptops, and switches. We have 186 desktop computers as well. We have 22 to 30 servers, and I'm sorry I'm being a little vague, but part of our grants that we get, they try not, they tell us in public not to tell you how many exactly we have of servers, for obvious reasons. So if I'm being a little vague with the numbers, it's, it's in that range, between 22 and 30. And then we have operating systems, we have 16 individual operating systems throughout the town. And they have to be maintained individually. They, they, they can't be combined on servers or anything else, they have to be maintained individually on their own server. We are moving to the 800-megahertz system, as we heard. That, just the radio programming alone, yes, we are piggybacking with Nashwa on that for their help. However, if we have radios that need to be programmed, we are second in the line. Nashwa's first in line if they have radios, we're second in line. We have all the laptops in fire trucks and fire cruisers, and tablets and police cruisers that all deal with communication issues and communications. I really think this is, that extra position, the communication, IT communication position is a need for this town now, it's not, it's not a want. I've talked to department heads out back, and in meetings, and they all agreed that it is a need of this town as well. And they all came up, and they all looked for savings, so that I could bring this position forward for at least a half a year. And that's what I presented in this default budget, is that that position would be funded at a half a year starting January 1st. And that cost is, is around $50,000 for a half a year. The last thing is that in talking, in looking at wages, in the, in the overall in wages, is that the, the voters, the voters are, sorry, the voters have approved the warrant, the contracts. We've had three contracts on the warrant. All three of our contracts passed by an average of 63% or greater. We had a school contract on, the voters approved that. The voters see the need to give individuals raises. In talking to my department heads, I was talking about what can we give the 69 non-union employees for a raise this year? And they all said to me, we'd like to give 4% for morale purposes, and because that's similar to what you were giving the unions out eventually. I said, okay, guys, you want to give 4% raise, come up with the, find me, find me the money in the budget. All of them found money in the budget to be able to give the non-union people 4% raise. So that's all factored into this as well. So overall, the savings for health insurance is 161,665. Total salary and wage decreases savings of $187,000. $945,000 comes from what I call all other and capital operating equipment, and I'll be more than happy to go through that right now. Like I said, each department came up with their cuts. Do you want me to go line item by line item, or do you want me just to hit on the major ones?
I'd like the major ones.
Major ones, okay. Legal litigation, $25,000 decrease. We're fortunate, in 2024, '25 now, we have no new contracts to negotiate. So that was savings of about $15,000 there, and about 10, I took $10,000 out of my legal budget for a $25,000 savings. Still gives me $130,000 for legal expenses. National transit, we talked last meeting about national transit. Basically, flat-lined national transit plus added $4,000 for our match of that $17,000 grant, for a total of $43,000. We'll be at $60,000 if we get that $17,000 grant, what should be basically level-funded from what we paid this year. what should be basically level-funded from what we paid this year. Going down, small and assessing, but, you know, even, even assessing a department that has a two-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar budget, they came up with cuts. They said that honestly, we don't need, we can hold off on replacing our, our computers for one more year and that's three thousand dollars. So, I just wanna let you know that every department came up with cuts. And we didn't make cuts of, of, just to make cuts. Like, I didn't cut parades. I didn't cut the, the movies in the park. I didn't cut the concert series. Things that, those kind of cuts because I know those are important to the residents of Merrimack and important to the council. So, we looked at individual line items that, that, you know, things like computers, can we push them off for another year? So, in Fire, we looked at a couple of things and I'll just bring one, two of them up. Is the uniforms, talking to the Fire Chief. Hopefully, thus hiring and, and people leaving the department for, for other opportunities is stabilized. So, he feels that he can get some, some turnout gear savings there, about fifteen thousand dollars. The other one, the other big one is communications equipment, the fifty-six thousand dollars. Well, with our grant with the federal government is for communication equipment. And this communication equipment we're buying is basically, could be supplemented by using that grant to purchase that money for, for equipment. And when Deputy Tarleton went back and started talking to the federal government about maybe moving, shifting some monies around here or there for other items such as construction, the federal government said, that's gonna be a two-to-three-year delay because we'd have to do an environmental study. So, we decided that we have some equipment needs that we need in both Police and Fire that we were gonna buy out of the budget. We're gonna use the grant to buy them instead. And we'll have to come up with some construction needs. And when, when we get a final figure, we'll be in front of the council to discuss that, what the construction needs. But we do have other money that we can use for that.
Paul, on, on that one, can you talk about the education and training?
Yeah, so, the education and training, the chief felt that there were several line items that he could, he could reduce to the total of about fifteen thousand dollars. It's a kind of a train-the-trainer, bring in online, you know, looking on online stuff, potentially bringing in people to come and train instead of going out to get trained, things of that sort. There's been some small cuts and, and I could go through them with you, but it was, it was literal, you know, two thousand here, a thousand here, and it just totaled.
So, we're changing the way we train, not necessarily reducing training?
Right.
Is that a fair way to put it?
Yes. Go ahead.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy making cuts and all of these cuts are gonna hurt. But the public has spoken and we have to come up with something. So, losing overtime for live-fire training, that's a huge hit for us. Can't make that up. Losing money on education and training, again, another huge hit for us. But I need the people in the apparatus going to calls. So, now, we have to weigh response versus training. Training is just as important as response, but I need the response. So, we're willing to figure out a better way to do training. It's not gonna be the best, but we'll figure something out. So, when cuts are asked for, these are the things that we have to look at. So, it's not decimating my training budget, but it's certainly not gonna be where I'd like it to be, especially since we fought really hard over the last couple of years to increase it and improve it and do better. But we understand cuts have to happen, so where do we take the monies from? So, we took a hard look. We looked at what we're spending this year and what can we do next year? So, that's how some of these numbers were derived, is where are we at in this year financially? And what do we think projecting for next year, where do we think we're gonna be? So, that's how we came up with the numbers.
Thanks, Chief. Barbara?
Question, Paul.
Yeah.
You remember we got that, wasn't exactly a grant, but it was money that came in because we have workforce housing going in? I think it was something like half a mil.
Four hundred and change, yes.
So, what's that going to do?
I have ideas with that money.
Cause I was thinking if we, I mean, we have police and fire that definitely need training. I mean, other departments have training needs as well.
We, we can look at that money and, and come up with a plan for it. I don't wanna say, but that's one of those issues with the tower when we have to build the tower and if we need to come up with some construction money.
Yeah.
That could be a potential source for that construction money. So, yes, we do have the, we do have that four hundred thousand dollars that we can use at our discretion. We just have to put a plan together for that money.
And personally, I think that it's, it is kinda better to keep that separate, even though it's a bitter pill to swallow for departments and, and for us and the community as a whole. But they spoke about cutting our budget back and so, that's what we're doing by utilizing that money when it ultimately probably should be for something else. I don't think it's a good idea because it kind of negates what they're asking for. Because the voters, as painful as it might be to a degree, they really were very kind on other items, the union contracts, the, caper reserve funds. That was shocking to me that that made it. I was thrilled. And so, honoring the will of that vote, I think, is why we should just kinda try and stay away from that.
Well, the other thing too is that like we've done with the SAFRA grant, you don't wanna put that money into recurring funds. You wanna use it for stuff like construction, which is a one-time expenditure.
Right.
And it's not gonna be recurring year after year after year. So, that's why we would have to look at some of this stuff and, and look, look to see what, what we can do. But we're still, we're still thirteen months out for the end of that budget, so, you know, we have, we could get salary savings. We could get health, more health insurance savings because our mix changes. There, there are a lot of, a lot of variables out there still that, that could happen. One thing I forgot to mention in the, in the police budget when we were looking at things is, and it's in the salary savings, is we reduced outside details as well. We reduced the number of outs- amount for outside detail because we looked at the last three years of what we actually spent and we brought it back down for outside detail. Yeah, yeah, to what we've been spending. You know, that's, that's one of those items that was offset by revenue, so our revenues decreased as well. So, but we did look into that as well. And if I can continue with-
I, I would just, before we move on, I would just say, you know, I understand there may be additional savings in the budget throughout the year. And I would just ask that you monitor that and try to prioritize training. One of the things that, you know, is just drilled into my head from my years in the military is an ounce of sweat during savings or during training can be a gallon of blood on the battlefield. And so, if you can prioritize training throughout the year, if you have savings in other areas, I would greatly appreciate it.
No, and we will look at that like we look at everything else. If there, and, and I've told every one of the department as if there's something that comes up to the year and you must need it and it's, it was something that got cut or something, we'll, we'll look into trying to find the money as well. So, understood. And I, it was, I don't wanna say we, we, we just cut willy-nilly training. It was, it's a hard decision to, to make some of these cuts, you know? And you wanna trained workforce. You want people educated. You want people with knowledge. But can we do it a different way? Yes, we can.
I just wanted to make a comment. I respect your opinion, Andy, and I would concur with that.
Yeah. So, for police, operating supplies, that's ammunition. So, we're gonna do a buy-ahead this year and that's twenty thousand dollars. Once again, they looked at their training budget and it, they, they cut out some training, but they, once again, feel that they can do training in a different way and they would still have the, the effect of, of the training. I believe it was, you know, some of, some of the issue with getting expenses. Some of this training costs too. Some of this money, I wanna say in the training is for contractual agreements for people going to college. And if they're not gonna, if we know who's going to college and who's using it, if nobody goes to college or goes on for a master's degree, then we have some of that money that we can repurpose and go through. So, some of our, our police, police, for instance, has money in there for, for college courses for all three of their uni- two of their unions. So, if they don't use it, they're allowed to move it, move it in a different direction as well. So, but because they're contractual, I have to put that money in the budget. So, there are some, you know, some savings there that trying to shore up, like, like the Fire Chief said, it, what's been, being expended, what's expected to be spent in the following years. Forty-five thousand dollars for vehicles. We're gonna actually have some savings and some salary money there in police, so we're gonna buy a vehicle a little bit earlier. Instead of July, we'll buy it in the June timeframe. So, they'll still be getting their three new vehicles for the year, but one will be bought in the June period and, and two will be bought later on in the year. So, they'll still have their three vehicles, but savings of forty-five thousand dollars. Going down, like I said, even, you know, we had seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars worth of operating supplies in, in DPW admin and that's for the MS four. We have a lot of MS four supplies on hand. Don looked at it and said, I got enough to get me through next year too, so we can, we can look at reducing that. And then, in highway, the big one in highway, other outside service, eighty-three fifty-nine, that is that asphalt pile. We're not gonna grind it again this year. So, it's just gonna get bigger for the next time. And then, salt and sand, eighteen thousand dollars. We're gonna make sure the salt barn's filled and then, we're gonna look at doing some pre, pre-buying as well there. And then, the big one is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for, for paving. While that hurts, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in paving is not gonna really affect what we're gonna pave next year. It might affect how we do some of the paving. We might not do a grind injection, like, you know, some grinding and injection like we did in Habuzik and Jopper and things of that sort. Or we might have to just do an overlay and look at those areas. But the paving is gonna still happen in town. And we've, we've really, we increased the paving to one-point-six million last year, reducing it back to one-point-four. That's, that's about what we, we've, it's more than what we've paved in the past. So, I think we've been paving in the past about one-point-two million. One-point-four is still more than what we had in the past. And then, in solid waste, special handling, you know, we, we grind down that brush pile and that's at a cost. We might still grind down that brush pile, but at a lesser amount or a lesser amount to that brush pile to be ground down on there. And then, also, add the handling to match up what we've been paying for electronics and things of that sort to match, match that up to, to what's in the budget, what we've been getting in the past. And then, the twenty-seven thousand dollars, because we're buying the trailer this year, we're gonna look at seeing how much and making it all one big PO for delivery of that trailer for the twenty, you know, instead of trying to break up site work till next year, just do it all this year with the trailer and make sure everything's there so the trailer is good to go, the new trailer, office trailer in the front of the building. And that's ninety-five thousand in this year and then whatever else we'd need to, to make sure that it would fit onsite and groundwork. So, we had twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings. The library came up with thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars in cuts in all other. They also came up with another twenty, thirteen, eighteen thousand dollars in cuts in salary, salary line items. So, the library came in with about fifty-one thousand dollars in cuts. And I appreciate that, that they did offer those cuts up to the town. So, they, they've, they even stepped up to the plate. The library stepped up the plate and made cuts. And I'm sure their cuts were not, they weren't easy either. But they looked at their expenses and, and stepped up and said, these are what we need to cut and this is what we wanna give, you know, we'll give to the town. Missly, maintenance and, maintenance, equipment maintenance, that's some, the four thousand dollars is a small piece of equipment that we were buying and, and we can just buy it this year cause it wasn't, isn't that, you know, four thousand dollars, they have money left over in their budget. Seventeen buildings, we had a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars in building repairs here. Dawn, Dawn said that she needed some money and I listened because I was gonna cut the whole hundred. But Dawn asked me to give her about seventy-five thousand dollars because we got older buildings. We got older units, air conditioning units. Our, you know, we, we just upgraded most of our sprinkler system lines in the buildings for, for fire, fire protection. But, you know, there are some spawning that's happening over at the, the east wing that we need to look at and take care of cause, you know, the more, the longer it goes, the worse it might be kinda deal. So, we need to look at doing those repairs, but that's twenty-five thousand dollars in savings. And then, this one was a, a tough cut, but it's the, in Robert, Community Development is the master plan. But we were doing the master plan over two years anyways, so it'd just be delayed a year. And talking to Robert, he felt that, you know, delaying it a year is not gonna affect our master plan. We can, we still have a master plan that we can go by. But it's one of those, that seventy-five thousand dollars worth of savings there to come up with it. And it's just delaying it one year.
So, next year, it's gonna be a hundred-and-fifty in the budget.
Yep, yeah. But, once again, that four hundred thousand dollars, we might be able to spend on the master plan because it's a non-recurring cost.
You got a lot quieter there. I didn't hear that last part.
Okay, sorry.
That's cause he didn't want you to hear.
What was afraid of?
No, not at all. I'm going dry. I've been talking so much. No, that a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, what I said is that we got that four hundred thousand dollars and, and we just need to put a plan together for that four hundred and potentially, we can use that money for the master plan. We just, we need to come up with a plan and we need to let the budget settle right now and then, we need to move forward. The big piece, like I said, is the tower construction and where do we stand with that? And then, after we get those numbers, we can figure out additional uses for that money that are non-recurring, such as the master plan, which is non-recurring.
Right.
So. The, there is the cut for police outside detail, thirty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And then, wastewater came up and we talked to Leo Godet and said to him, please, can you come up with some savings in your budget? And Leo, Leo put this together and the bulking agent, which we use for our compost, the vendors held their rate and we can do some pre-buying with that as well for the sawdust. Equipment maintenance, machinery and equipment, thirty-two million dollar upgrade. We're hoping that our maintenance account will go down. Yeah, we still have some old equipment in some of our pump stations, but most of our equipment is up to date or at least fi- less than five years old, so we're figuring we can get some savings there. And then, the thirty-two thousand for operating equipment. Give me one second. I know he has it off the top of his head if I asked him. Oh, that is the blowers. Compost, compost blowers. I knew he had it off the top of his head. But we're gonna, we're gonna buy them this year. So, we'll, we'll buy double the amount that we would normally have bought this year. We're just gonna buy them this year because the salary savings in their division as well. And then, the last thing is flatlining our fire protection area of Penachuck Water Works and that's a ten thousand dollar savings. Totaled with wastewater, it's, it's a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars total. But really wastewater is at a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand and Penachuck Water Works is at ten thousand, three oh six. Those, all those all other costs total nine-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, oh twenty-four, added to the salary and health insurance, total savings of one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Council budget was thirty-nine million, seven-seventy-eight, five-sixty-six. Subtract the one-point-two million or one-point-three million away from it, you write on your default number of thirty-eight million, four-eighty-four, two-forty-one. There are some other things that I did not cut in this budget that we had discussions with departments. And I wanna bring a couple of those up right now with the Town Council. One of them is crossing guards, school crossing guards. One of them is crossing guards, school crossing guards.
Oh.
We pay for the school crossing guards. It's about fifty-fifty in this state. Fifty ti- fifty percent pay from the municipal side, fifty percent pay for the crossing guards out of the school side. Right now, we do not have any school crossing guards. We have one crossing guard down at Turkey Hill Road at the intersection of Turkey Hill and Amherst. He works and in the afternoon, he becomes a school crossing guard, I believe at Reed's Ferry, uh, Thornton's Ferry, sorry, Thornton's Ferry. Um, we take the school resource officer out of the school at the end of the school day at the high school. And bring him up to be the crossing guard here at Babuzik Lake Road because we did, we cannot hire school crossing guards. We're covering it through overtime. We're covering it. I did not make that cut out of the budget. That is a council decision and that's a council policy that needs to be talked about and explored more. I didn't think um, I had enough time to explore that in the default budget. But that's discussion that the council's gonna have to have and, and then what, because it affects more than just the town count, town, it affects the school as well. So that's one, one issue that we did not talk about. Um, another item that we really didn't talk about was um, the fire overtime besides thirty thousand dollars for training. Um, we feel that the budget for fire overtime should be sufficient um, to the council's policy of eleven. Staffing to eleven as well, as long as the budget holds. Um, so, but uh, that, that was another thing that we did not discuss and we did not, I did not bring forward as a cut. But that's something that if the council wanted to, they, they could look into further their policy on that. Um, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying that's one of the items. Um, a lot of thought and hard work went in and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, um, not that I didn't think this at all. I knew my department heads would step up to the plate and they really did step up to the plate. Some of them blew me out of the park with some of their cuts that they proposed. Um, you know, um, another one is that we need to have a discussion with is the park attendant down at Wasserman Park. Um, Matt brought that forward. I said, no, we're not gonna cut that position because that's the town council decision whether or not they want the park attendants at Wasserman Park on the weekends. Um, you know, that's a hot topic, but that's something that the council would have to discuss. Um, so we looked at a lot of different things and a lot, departments did bring a lot of different suggestions forward. Some of them was, were, yeah, thank you very much and others were, no, thank you, but no, thank you. Uh, but I wanna thank all the department heads and everybody in the audience, the library as well. And the library trustees for all their hard work to come in to hit this default budget. Like I said, it's not. It's not what we wanted, but we understand that the people voted and that's our budget and we'll make it work next year. And we tried not to cut services. We really did. We tried not to cut services at all. And I think you'll see with the cuts we did make, no service, services will not be highly affected. There might be some changes in the way we have to do things internally. But we're looking, out looking at the residents that hopefully they won't see much of a difference with it.
Very good. I'm always worried about the paving account. That's my big one that I'm always concerned about. Cause I've been told a couple of years ago that we were falling gradually behind and um, I suppose. What is it about eight percent or ten? I can't remember the number now. It was.
We're, we're working on catching up. There's a lot of developments that are older developments that are just getting paved for the first time after forty years. Um, we're doing the injections on some of our major feeder roads. And uh, what, what uh, we're seeing a lot of um, stability by doing that injections in the roads. Um, and we're hoping that they will last a little bit longer. Um, we know some roads have alligator, alligator cracking on them. Um, when we go into pave the developments that haven't been paved in a while, excuse me. Um, we're putting an overlay, we're putting a shim in first. So hopefully the shim fills in some of those cracks. And then we're putting our crown back on the road to have the water runoff to get our crown back in. Whatever TPW says the crown should be, we're putting the crowns back in the roads. And we're, we're, then we're putting a final coat overlay on top of uh, the shim coat. So we're trying a lot of different things. Will alligator cracks come back through? Where I hope, most likely they will, but we're hoping that they last uh, a number of years. And then the other thing Dawn's doing is that some of the roads that she has paved recently, um, we're doing crack sealing on them. To help shore up the road too, on the cracks. So that the cracks just don't get, keep them getting bigger and getting puddles on new pavement that we put in. So, um, like I said, some of these cuts, they're, they're cuts and you know, the, the uh. The master plan and, and the paving are, are big cuts and, you know, even, even the small cuts hurt some departments.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I, I wanna thank all the department heads. They really did step up um, and blow me out of the water on, on some of this stuff. Um, so.
Yeah, and, and thank you for being here this evening. Sorry I made you wait another couple of.
Well, they're here in case you had questions.
No, I appreciate that. Um, and uh, and I, I, I concur, I think we all concur. We appreciate the, you know, helping us travel through this because it made my life easier on this end. And uh, I, I'm hoping that those cuts, even though it's painful, it's able to be sustained throughout the year. You know, with the, everything we do, but. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say that I, I appreciate the work that, that everybody's gone into. It, it, it's, it'll be easy for some people to say, look, you cut one point three million out of the budget, no big deal. But it, it isn't that. It is a big deal in training and maintenance and replacement of older equipment and things like that. It's all gonna impact us. We may not see an impact in direct services if, if you manage to keep staffing and things of that nature. But you're gonna see an impact at, down the road in maintenance costs and, and wear and tear and roads and stuff like that. So I, it isn't, it, it, it is unfortunate. Um, because I think we came up with a good budget to begin with. But I think this is gonna at least respond to what the, the voters said they wanted and uh, we'll move on from here. But I appreciate all the work everybody did to try and come up with these kinds of numbers. And we'll just keep an eye on the budget throughout the year and, and shift uh, back and forth between line items as needed. To make sure that we keep equipment on the road and, and keep staff running.
Yeah, it's, it's an important fa- it's an important job that, you know, our new finance director will have to uh, keep an eye on it. And talk to department heads to make sure and I'm, I know he's up to the task uh, to do it.
It's like a baptism by fire.
Yeah.
That's right.
But, but you know, all joking aside, he's lived through this before. Whereas other communities been in default budget before, so he understands the need and understands it. He's the reason, yes.
He brought it here.
Yes.
Barbara?
I kinda have a question and you may not have an answer, but that's okay.
I'll try.
But it's something to think about. Your, you mentioned a lot of pre-buying of certain items like ammunition.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some of the paving equipment, um, materials. I guess my question is, is what happened that there was money left over in those line items from this year? That you can pre-buy for next year?
We had some health insurance savings. We've had openings all throughout the year. Um, in highway department, we had a lot of openings. In solid waste, we had openings. In equipment maintenance, we have openings. So we do have openings that, that those salary dollars are, we're trying to fill the positions. We have contracts out there. We're, we're in contract with a lot of these people, but we have salary, salary openings, salary savings on some of this stuff. Um, and uh, and we're looking forward to uh, to hopefully not ha- being fully staffed. Um, but uh, we know the reality of it. I've been in the business long enough to know that, you know. Fully staffed doesn't mean a hundred percent of two hundred and five full-time employees are there all the time. But as long as you have a, a majority of them there and, and you know, we're, we're trying to fill these positions and we just have some salary savings. Um, guys are get, you know, guys, guys and ladies who get on short-term disability. That's some savings in salaries as well. So we have some salary savings, some benefit savings that go along with it. And that's really where our savings is in the budget. Um, and, and to your point, Tom, yeah, we, we were able to come up with one point three million dollars in cuts. It took us a month to come up with those cuts because we just didn't wanna willy-nilly the cuts. We had a lot of thinking to do and, and you know, we could've, I've could've cut three of the positions out of police. They're unfilled. It's easy. Boom. No, that doesn't help the town of Merrimack.
Mm-hmm.
By cutting three police officers. And I don't plan on cutting three police officers, so if the police union's listening, no. But it would've been, it could've been easier and we, we could've got three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars without batting an eye right there. These cuts, it took a month. It took a lot. The departments were looking at their budgets for, for a couple of weeks after it. And uh, and the other thing I do wanna say is that even though we're in default situation, tax rate is gonna go up from last year. You voted in three union contracts. You voted in a five cent increase on our capital, capital reserve funds. This budget, even though it's one point three million dollars, less than what was, what was presented to the town council in the budget. Your budget, your tax rate is gonna still go up. And I don't have that number because there's a lot of stuff being discussed and conquered that could send revenue down to municipalities. And school districts. I don't have that number. And I know people have asked. I got an email the next day, what's the new tax rate? I don't know. I don't know what the new tax rate is because I didn't know what cuts we were gonna be bringing forward. So what I would need from the council tonight is a motion to approve the town manager's default budget cuts as presented. Unless you have other cuts you would like, need, like to make.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Barbara, signed by Tom. And again, thanks for all the effort. So uh, any other? Any other conversation? Call a question, others in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstained, seven zero zero.
Thank you for that.
We appreciate it.
And, and once again, I, I do wanna thank the department heads and actually all their staff because I'm sure. They worked with their staff to come up with these cuts, so it's been a definitely group effort to get where we need to be.
Well, I just wanna commend all of you because having been a manager for most of my professional life. What you usually do is go after the, eat the low hanging fruit, which are always the positions. Because you can take a chunk right off the top by eliminating positions and you didn't do that, so congratulations on that.
Yep. Alrighty.
Yeah, thank you everyone.
Alright, we'll move on to ten under new business. The council will discuss the funding from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services PFAS rebate program. What's that?
I was, you know, I thought of that at seven o'clock.
Who's doing it? Lon Woods always expected a vote.
And Lon always made it a point that we had to vote to extend the meeting beyond ten o'clock.
Yeah, Andy's out here. We have the rule and that was Lon's beef. We never followed the rule.
Well, no, he would make, he, he got to the point where he was making a motion.
He just wanted us to at least make a motion.
Acknowledging.
Yeah.
That's right.
In honor of Lon, I'd like to make a motion that we uh, extend past ten o'clock.
I will second that as well.
Motion by Andy, second by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 We should all say no in honor of Lon.
He would get up and leave. He, he would.
He would.
He uh, but once we started voting on that ten o'clock thing, he would stay.
And we never understood why he'd always get up at ten o'clock.
No, I didn't until he told me one day. And so I'm going, okay, then let's do that.
So.
Thank you. Um. That was a stall tactic on my part, so I can get back here and get my notes.
No problem.
Perfect.
Um, the uh, I had a call with um, New Hampshire D E S. And uh, right after the EPA changed the limits of uh, the drinking water, the MCLs, the drinking water, uh, related to PFAS. And uh, they wanted to know if uh, the town of Merrimack wanted to keep the million dollars that they were, we were awarded the grant for. Um, and then they made it clear to me that your um. Your grant is not based on the new EPA limits. It's based on the state limits, which are higher. So um, that would be one of the factors involved with the drinking water. Um, the other factor is, is that the grant's been running for about a year now, a little more than a year. I had um, three people, today I have a fourth, sorry. So I had one person apply. I had one person start to apply and said, you know what, I'm just going with the state. I have a third person who applied that I'm waiting for money to come back from the state. So really I only had two approved applications right now in two years or a year. And I have a third person who called me today asking me about the program. So in talking with D E S, I said, so what's, when are you gonna change your limits? And they said, well, the state has two years after the EPA to enact the new limits. And then five years to implement the new limits. Uh, they kinda said we're further along than most states. Um, however, it isn't being brought up in this session of the House and Senate. So since it's, the rules are, the grant that we're following are state law. It would still be at those higher MCLs and it, the uh, the uh, the drinking water standards. Um, the other thing is, is that they, I asked D E S. What happens when somebody calls from Merrimack? They said, we shift them down to you. And because we had the money, so if that's the case.
Wouldn't they want a, the state program or not?
Well, no, why tell them what the state program that honestly are individual sixty-five hundred more than what the state would pay. For poet system or a point-of-entry system. Um, however, connecting to a water source like M V D or Penachuck, the state pays more than us. So they would weed out what they would do and say, okay, well, if you're doing this, you can go to the town of Merrimack. If you're doing this, uh, connecting to M V D or Penachuck, you come through us. They sent out over twenty-three hundred letters telling people about grant opportunities. The state has twelve million dollars. Twelve million dollars sitting in this fund to get people hooked up to clean water. Um, they asked if I would be, if the town council would be willing to give back some of this million dollars. Because they do not see us spending it by September of twenty-twenty-six. And they could repurpose it to some smaller communities to get them going with the new, the, the additional money. Uh, to get some of the smaller communities, some of this uh, aspect of it. Um, that's why I'm asking for um, basically to return. A lot of the money, but I wanna hold a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so that the town could reimburse up to twenty homes, up to sixty-five hundred over the, if, over the next year. And what are we, in May? Over the next uh, sixteen to eighteen months, if we have it. Um, so that still gives us the opportunity that we know that twenty homes in Merrimack, if they come through the program, will definitely get funded. But when the state has over twelve million dollars for this project. It seems that if, if people want to get poet systems or point-of-entry systems or, or uh, point-of-use systems. The, the money is there for them right now. And I think that was the one thing at the time the town council um, really uh, was concerned about. Is that Merrimack residents out of the consent decree would not be able to do this. Now Merrimack residents inside this consent decree are having trouble as well. With uh, trying to get hooked up to either M V D water. Um, they're just delayed. Uh, this fall supposedly they're gonna be hooked up, some of the homes.
Is it M V D problem or is it state problem?
I, both contractor problem, getting a contractor in, um, things of that sort. There, there are a number of factors, uh, but they're still getting bottled water. So.
Doesn't help.
Which, but, but they're, but uh, but the, 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 you know, some of these people wanna. Which, but, but they're, but, uh, but the, 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 you know, some of these people wanna look at selling their homes.
Of course.
And there's an issue, like a gentleman came to see me last week, um, his father passed away. And he's getting the house ready for sale. And he's being told that he might have connection in September. And what does he do? He can't sell the house because he knows. As is. So, um, I had him call up to the state to try to push them along, to see what's going on. I will talk to him again, but he'd never, he didn't come, I asked him to come back when he talked to the state, but I know he has a lot of things going on with his father just passing away and, and everything. So, but I'm sure he'll be back in to explain to me what's going on. But when this conversation happened and, and, uh, I said, well, you know, I have a counselor who sits on the PFAS board, and they said, we talked to Nancy already. So if Nancy wants to, I'll yield the floor to Nancy if she wants to just explain what they talked to her about, um, with this.
I value your opinion, so I'm curious as to what do you think?
Thank you. What Paul said is, is exactly the situation. We have the challenge, many private well owners have been on bottled water for over five years and have had promises for the last five years that this would be resolved within a year or two years. The area, um, I know that Paul's referencing is the Wire Road Bedford Ro, uh, Brenda Lane area. And I too, uh, I know I've spoken to the gentleman you've talked to, I've spoken with DES and it's getting the crews and getting them out. It's, it's multi-step, it's not us. It's not the MVD, it is beyond our control. And it's unfortunately, the, the situation that, that Paul describes is a, is a perfect example of the dilemma that Merrimack residents are stuck with. Um, and that's just one person, there's many and, you know, and it, it's just, it's wrong. It's wrong across the board. Um, but to Paul's point about, um, this, this request from DES, I was at a PFAS summit in Rhode Island, it was the first meeting I've ever missed in the town council. And, um, I talked to Amy Russo about this and, and, um, she explained the, the situation. It makes sense to me. I certainly, I, I think Paul's got a really good idea with retaining some of these funds. The bottom line is that people will still be eligible for that, but we don't, they can go to the state. The only difference was the amount of money that we were offering and, um, pretty across the board, people are able to do it within this, with the state funding, covering that. And, you know, Paul said about the, the, uh, the MCLs, again, it's a process. You know, the EPA makes this designation, but now DES has to go to rulemaking, which eighteen months, forty-four months, it, it's everything is again. So it will probably take up to five years. That doesn't mean in the, in the, in the interim that we can't still address all these things. But I just, I just feel really bad for our residents. It's not only Merrimack that's stuck in this situation and, you know, as we, we know, I mean, St. Gobain, St. Gobain has, has refused to do some of the, the, um, uh, the testing that DES has asked them to do. And so DES, I mean, St., uh, DES is not going to do that testing in those, those areas. But these are the things that had everything been done in the timeframe that they were supposed to be done, we'd be further along and people would not still be on bottled water five years into this, so.
And, and this grant is outside the consent decree. So we cannot help these people on Wire Road or Brenda Lane area with any of this money. This is, it has to be outside the drawn dissent, the, this consent decree that was agreed upon. And it's the red, it's the outer bounds that, that we're looking at with them. So it just, we, we, a lot of people have done it and they've gone through the state and actually Amy kinda joked to me and said, they think our process is easier than yours. And I said, why is that? They said, well, we can do our, we can do ours online. Where you want all this documentation.
You've only had a occurrence of four or five people.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right, that came in. And, and honestly, you know, um, sorry. All. My mother is outside the consent decree. Her well tastes, is testing at thirty MCLs, which she should be getting a filtration system. And I still don't, I tried to talk to her and I talked to some of her neighbors. And actually, it's her neighbors who are coming in because they're all outside it. And they're, uh, and, and they're, we don't want to give up our well. You're gonna bring water, no, we're gonna give you a point of entry system, ma, and, and other people, that will filter the water. And they just, for some reason, some of these people just don't want to go because of, they think MVD's coming in. And then MVD got a grant to expand some of the water lines down like on Palmieri and stuff. So some of those people are waiting, waiting, waiting. And my second person said, I'm done waiting, just, I'm sick of buying bottled water. I want, I want a point of entry.
That's what I wanted.
And, and that's what he did. And because he's been told that, oh, don't worry, MVD's coming in with a water line. Oh, don't worry, MVD's coming in with a water line. But it hasn't happened. He goes, if I hook up to, excuse me, MVD water, excuse me, I'll pay, I'll pay it out of pocket.
See, I'd do the same thing.
So, but that's, that's what's happening with some of these.
I wouldn't put up with five years of bottled water.
Oh, thank you. The only two things I was gonna say is, a lot of the frustration for people is, yes, you may pay me the five thousand dollars that I pay for a filtration system, but they now have to pay for filtration media for, in perpetuity. Where if they had a private well that was fine before, it didn't cost them. So now they're paying, so they're taking on an additional, right. Uh, but the only other thing that I was gonna say is, I, I think with this, uh, what I would just love to see is that we just, um, sort of make something, make this public again, that this, you know, that, that we're, the program will be ending or whatever. And just so the people again, we sort of raise awareness about this in case, sort of like this is your last, last hurrah. You know, you might wanna apply if you're interested and.
Well, I'm going, uh, I asked the state to give me everybody in Merrimack because they've been keeping track of who's got point of entry and who tested higher. I said, could I have all those names? And I, they did give me those names and I was planning on doing a mailing to all those people to say, hey, the town has money, include our packet with it. If you're, if you want to, you're eligible. Please put in a point of entry, point of use. If you have any questions, give me a call. But, um, you know, I don't know how much more business that will generate or, or not. But if twenty people come in and we spend all our money, I can always say, all right, the state has the same program. You know, the state will be more than willing to, to help you out. Because the state has sent letters to every one of these Merrimack residents on the list. They, the last, after the EPA, they sent out twenty-three hundred letters, not just Merrimack residents, but throughout the state to let them know that, of the new limits. And please apply if you put in a system. So.
Just wondering, could we use maybe like Merrimack TV or something or, or, um, I mean, you know, we probably already have it on the, the website.
We do have, we do have it on the website.
It's different.
Um, we could do a, a social, a social media blast as well.
Yeah. If they got a letter though, if they got a letter.
Yeah, they all got, they all got.
I mean, that would be fine to do that, but I, I don't know what impact it'll have when they're not responding to, you know, to a direct mailing.
Yeah, I, I would plan on doing the direct mailing. I could also do a, a Facebook blast that, hey, uh, we've sent out all these letters. If interested, please contact.
Folks may not really under, folks may not really understand the letter and why they're getting it, you know, like cold mail, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, depending upon how it's written too.
Yeah.
But I also, if I have the database, and I, I haven't looked at the database, but if I think what they did send me is their, what their MCLs were, I could put that in the letter, you tested at, uh, the limits this.
Make it personal.
Yeah, you know, kind of have a, a blast that way with it. But, um, the, the main, the main reason I'm bringing this forward is DES asked us if we'd, you know, be willing to release some money. And in talking to them, I said, I'd like to hold back about twenty homes. And they said, yeah, yeah, that, that seems okay. But, yeah.
Makes reasonable sense. And it may never, that might not even be used, but.
Right, right. So, um, I don't know if anybody, yes, Tom?
So I guess, uh, this discussion's gone all over the place and around, around and around. You're trying to say that of the million dollars that we got, we should return nine hundred and thirty thousand and keep a hundred and thirty thousand, which is enough to service twenty more homes. And then I hear people talking about, should we do media blasts and should we do things to try and encourage people? Are we thinking that if we, even if we do that, we'd only get twenty people?
Yes.
And, and if we didn't do the media blast, we'd still have the hundred and thirty thousand to service people if they did. So it's not like we have to rush out and do a media blast. The question is whether or not twenty people is the most we think we'll ever get interested in this program.
That, the twenty, I, I randomly chose the twenty, knowing that the state had twelve million dollars on the other side of it if I ran out.
Funds.
So we could still get funds. And then the other thing the state is doing, that the town isn't going, doing, is the state is allowing the contractor to apply for the grant.
I didn't understand that last piece, I'm sorry.
The contractor's allowed to apply for the grant instead of the homeowner.
Contractor wants to sell the job because it's.
Contractor does the paperwork, contractor does everything, sends it in and says, here you go. Where the town of Merrimack, we'd have to change our policy all around to allow a contractor because we actually have certifications stating the, uh, the homeowner or the, the person who owns the home or living in the home certifies that the work has been done. And, uh, certifies that they do live there and that the, uh, their, their well was over the limits. So we'd have to change our policy around as well to allow that. And the state is having trouble with that.
In what way?
In the way that they told me, don't do it. Because it's been more of a pain for them than anything else. I'm sure it is, yeah. So, to, to try and understand, you said the state has twelve million. We want to give them back almost a million, which you give them thirteen million?
No.
Oh.
It's two different sets of money. The twelve million they have is with the new EPA limits for water. They can use that money for the new EPA limit, which I don't know them off the top of my head. Versus the million dollars, we're underneath a state RSA and a state grant that we can only hit fifteen. Our, our MCL is like fifteen for PFOA. Versus I think, what is it, five? Four? So it's, it's, it's two different pots of money.
I, I understand that, okay. So last night when I was at the NRPC listening to the commissioner of DES, it sounded like he said they had a lot more than twelve million, but that it was effectively a drop in the bucket to meet the EPA MCLs. So I, I don't think there's enough money out there regardless of where you put it, to, to meet those MCLs right now that the EPA is asking for. And so what I'm trying to understand is, I mean, I, I'm hearing people say, oh, well, if, if we run out of money here, they can apply to the state. But the, the state's not, there's not gonna be enough money there anyway. But I, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how this is gonna benefit people. If the, if the state program is different than the town's program, to say that, well, they can just apply to the state is not really the same thing, right? That, it's a, it's a different program, it's a smaller amount.
It's, we're at sixty-five and I believe they're at five thousand.
Right, unless you connect to town water, which they'll give you ten thousand.
Different money.
Right. And honestly, the two people that came in for us, one was at five, a little over five thousand, the other one was a little, was, they were both just a little bit over five thousand dollars with their filtration systems. Most of the filtration systems going in for point of entry are in the forty-five hundred dollar range.
But if we had no money.
Right.
We could just refer these people to the state.
Right, the state would be paying for it.
Would give them the money.
To do it.
For point of entry or like.
Point of use, whatever they're doing.
It's just the allotment's different.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I guess. And so why did we put this program in place in the first place?
We, at the time, felt because we didn't want the state to serve, who serves all the residents of New Hampshire unfairly because we had St. Gobain, the big polluter, that we wanted to give our residents in Merrimack a chance to be able to guarantee them the money as well as up to a million dollars. And where people are not taking it in Merrimack. And if they are, some of them have taken it, but they've gone through the state to get the money because they're under the five thousand dollars.
And we wanted to be sure that the money that was available for our constituents here was guaranteed if it went over, that we, they weren't still getting stuck for a thousand dollars or eight hundred dollars.
Concern, and I remember the concern was, even though there was a certain amount of money for the state, that's for the whole state. And we wanted to be able to isolate a chunk and have it guaranteed just for us.
The state's program started after ours, I believe. We started the conversation and then that came up.
I think you're right, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think at the very end, the state got theirs up and running before us because they had to approve our policy. And we tried to model ours against what the state did.
You know, um, there are a couple of folks in town who regularly write to DES to find out how, what kind of progress St. Gobain is making. Because they were told two, three years ago they were gonna be hooked up and they were still going for a contractor now. But in any case, I put the question out to DES and said, well, what happens with the new MCLs? And how does that affect St. Gobain? And what does St. Gobain come back and do now? And I said, because more people are gonna be affected by that. So I said, what's the gig? Oh, well, first, you know, we gotta wait for July first when the MCLs become effective. Then we've gotta do X, Y, Z. And in other words, there was no answer. So.
They don't know yet.
Well, they know what the MCLs are.
I can see, but they don't know what they have to, that's why it's a five years of implementation.
Yeah, well.
They have to determine.
But we're ahead of that because we've already been doing this testing every quarter. Remember that part?
I gotcha, yeah.
And, and so we already know the hotspots in, in the state. But what they aren't pushing is St. Gobain's additional liability now that the MCLs are lower.
Well, they're not official yet.
That's the answer.
Alright, so, uh, so the original point is, do we want to, uh, release nine hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars back? Um, and just retain that hundred and thirty, was it even, yeah, a hundred and thirty thousand? Somebody thinks it's a grand idea?
I, I, I appreciate and I defer to Nancy. I mean, she knows the ins and outs of every single component within the state. And if you're comfortable with it, then I'm okay with it as well.
I, I'm comfortable with us returning funds to DES because I think that makes sense. I just don't know the number of homes. And that's why I just thought it made sense, you know, to, to do sort of a, a blast. And Paul, Paul has a sense of what's coming in. I.
Would you prefer us to wait, Nancy?
Is there a, do we, do we have a time limit, Paul, or?
We really don't have a time limit, but honestly, three homes in a year and a half, it's not like they're, if they were pounding on my door and I had twenty calls for this, I'd be like, alright, hold off on this. I got one call today and that's it.
The reality is, if we used up those twenty slots, just everybody would have to go to the state at that point.
Correct.
That's the worst case scenario.
Correct.
Right.
I say give up.
And that, that's, that's where I'm coming from. It's, it's, I'm sitting on a million dollars that I know I'm not gonna spend by September of twenty twenty-six. I'd have to have a rush. You know, if twenty homes is a hundred and thirty, I'd have to have over two hundred people coming in to town.
What's your opinion?
And it's not happening.
Cause you had concerns. Okay, Al?
I support Paul, Paul's, I'm, you know, again, I would like to just remind everybody. I support Paul, Paul's, I'm, you know, again, I would like to just remind everybody, um, you know, the public that this money is available. If they haven't taken advantage of it, if they could reach out to, um, the town manager, um, soon, that would be really helpful. Or, or DES, right.
Amy's free.
Right. Amy Russo at Department of Environmental Services is a phenomenal, phenomenal resource. She is wonderful. She knows the ins and outs of everything. She's the one that coordinated this, this program up, up front. And, you know, I, I just, I just want to see our citizens take advantage of this. Um, because many of us have already paid for this out of pocket. So it certainly makes sense to, to be reimbursed for it. So I, you know, I, I, I talked with Paul earlier and I talked with Amy and I said, I don't object to this. I think we want everybody in the state to be able to use this money, but I just want to make sure we had first dibs. And so if we're not using the money, then I certainly don't want to deprive other people in the state of, of that money.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of nine hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars back to NHDES for the PFAS rebate program.
motion by Nancy Hinton, second by Barbara. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Thank you, everyone. Minutes, we have minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
I move to approve the minutes.
I had a couple of questions, if you want to try and straighten them out first before the motion.
Go fine.
I mean.
Nope, that, it could be six to one.
We had changed our policy to try and.
You go right ahead.
So on, on page one, under the reorganization of the town council, the way it's written looks different than we've done in the past. And it just kind of struck me as a little odd to, to, to just state that we voted four oh one without a motion of any sort or a.
Yeah, there's no motion there.
There, there's no, there's no, uh, there are no nominations. You know, obviously it doesn't need a second. It, it's different. I didn't know if we really wanted it to be written that way. And I don't really care strongly, but I wanted to bring it up and ask questions and see what people thought.
Well, I think it needs to reflect a nomination because then you don't, you cannot understand how all of a sudden we're re-electing people. It's, it's the process.
What I'll do is I'll have Becky go back and we'll put, we'll, we'll do it similar to what we did in two thousand twenty-three and be, before. But also, I know Tom nominated Finley. I know Finley nominated Nancy. And we need to put that in there. Nominate, nomination for chair, Finley Rothaus by, and put it in the same form that we did last year.
Yep. Okay. Um, on page three, at the top in line one, it says, Mr. McCallie shared that on Vice Chair Harrington, Counselor Murphy. I, I think if we just remove the word on, shared that, Vice Chair Harrington, Counselor Murphy, Representative Boyd, so forth and so on, all went on April sixteenth. I think it was an effort to originally start to say that they went on April sixteenth. And, and just ended up with an extra on in there.
Yeah, I didn't put, um, on page.
Nancy, yes. Did you have a point?
I just could add to what Tom said. Are you talking pa, top of page three?
Yeah.
Okay, the, I just think Representative Mooney should be added there as well.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
She was there too.
Yep.
And also a question in, in, uh, on, on item number two, the national transit system. Uh, it goes through a long discussion here, but then no action was taken. Did we, did we vote to approve their contract or did we do nothing?
I don't think you guys did anything. You just listened and said.
Just said, thanks for, thanks for this information.
Thanks. We'll be letting you know our decision based on our budget.
And then on line thirty-nine on that same page four, uh, it talks about if Primmex can't. And I didn't, can't what? Can't make one of the other dates? The sentence seems like it just kind of stopped.
You should say depending upon the availability of Primmex.
Yeah. Because that's what it was.
Okay.
Right? Yes, that's what it is. Depending on the availability.
The fifth or June nineteenth or June fourth or June eighteenth, if Primmex can't. So dependent upon the availability of Primmex.
The council decided either June fifth, nineteenth, fourth, eighteenth, depending on the availability of Primmex.
Okay, thank you. That was, that's all I had for questions.
Yeah, back to page three again, um, the first three lines. Representative Ron was also there.
Yep, excellent.
I watched on TV.
Good for you. Yeah. Check it.
You'll say for the.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth as amended.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Hinton, second by Nancy Murphy.
You weren't here.
Uh, well, you can second. You just can't make the original motion.
Or we'll give it to Barbara. Okay, second by Barbara. There we go. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero.
I'm going to abstain Finley because I was only here for half of it.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, uh, seven, uh, six zero one, with Mackenzie abstaining. Uh, comments from the press, comments from the public, seeing none. Comments from the council? I just like to thank Rick Agnew for these.
Yeah, um, the, uh, the honey is. The honey is from solid waste, the honey mill. Those are, uh, taken from the hives that solid, that we gave to Rick Agnew to put up at, uh, the transfer station.
Cool.
And yeah, so he's, uh, he gave you all your individual jar and see what it tastes like and, and go from there.
It's really good honey.
And he, he basically, I talked to him a little bit today and he said, there's enough flower and pollination right now that they're not really leaving too far because they can pollinate it up there. And he only had one incident up there. And he thinks it was with the bobcat.
Right.
That tore up his fence.
Bob head hasn't come back.
But it hasn't come back. So he thinks it was the bobcat because it kind of dug in the ground too.
Didn't get to the hives though.
Didn't, didn't touch the hive. He must have jumped in, got zapped and tried to get the heck out of dock. So, uh, but he was able to fix his fence and, uh, he, he's all happy and, uh, he actually wanted to thank the council for letting him do that and showed that it's a very productive hive.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Great. This is very kind. So I appreciate it. Yeah, no, it wasn't. That was a joke. That was really just a joke. Tom?
I was able to attend the NRPC's annual banquet conference party last night. Uh, where basically, uh, it was, the focus of all the discussions were on PFAS and water quality and, and groundwater and things of that nature. They had three different speakers, including the, uh, the director of DES or commissioner of DES. One of the fascinating things he showed was the, the map of the PFAS testing that's going on around the country. And, and so there's dots all over the country and New Hampshire is completely solid. Just because we've done, we're, we're way ahead of the game as far as testing for PFAS and contaminations and things of that nature. Um, the whole country is going to come under the EPA MCLs. So there's going to be a lot of issues going on. Because there were plenty of dots around the country where there were, uh, areas that are not meeting the PFAS requirements. But, but he was, he was pointing out that New Hampshire at least is fairly aware of where the situations are. As I think Nancy, you mentioned earlier tonight, that at least we know what we've got going on, uh, here in this area. So it was, it was a pretty fascinating presentation. Uh, and the, the slides, if anybody's interested in those presentations, are available on the NRPC website. Because they were a little bit hard to see at the meeting, uh, because for some reason the projector was only at about table level, which made it hard to see over everybody's heads. But it was a great opportunity. Pretty much open to anybody if you are around in town next year. It was a, an excellent program, uh, and excellent food out at Lavelle Winery. So if you see that offering coming around next year, I would recommend you sign up for it.
Yeah, this year I couldn't, I could, but I've been to those in the past and they do a nice job normally.
Yep. And I think that was Ten, Ten Haves last year as chairman. So he, he's been it for the last three years, I think. And he said, he's done. He's had it. And he's, so he's resigned from, from that position. But he's still one of our Merrimack reps, uh, representatives. Karen Elmer and myself, several of our state reps, including Nancy and Rose Marie and Bob, not Bob, Bill Boyd and Tim McGoo were there. As well as Senator Chanley.
Nelson Disco.
Just making sure they understand where, where things are in our town. And Senator Chanley, I, I, I picked on her a little bit about Continental Boulevard. And she just immediately said, yeah, no, we're understanding. We're working on it. We're going to get it. We're, you know. So they, I'm sure this has been.
You should have gained the opportunity, which is fine.
She's been pushed at quite a bit to, to do everything she can to make sure that that helps, uh, from the Senate perspective. Anyway, it was a good meeting last night.
Very good. Thanks, Tom. Anybody have anything further? I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Barbara, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody.